All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Due to the governor's statewide disaster declaration relating to the COVID-19 pandemic, and current public health guidelines for social distancing, I've determined that it's not prudent for the members of the village board or staff to convene in person for tonight's meeting. Also, there's supposed to be golf ball size hail. Therefore, the members of the village board are attending this meeting by a video conference. Those same conditions require barring access to the public for in-person attendance. In light of those limitations, the public's invited to attend and listen to the meeting through the Zoom platform or by phone as indicated on the meeting agenda. To comply with the Open Meetings Act requirements for virtual meetings, tonight's meeting is being recorded. Amy, if you could take attendance and ask everyone if they could be heard and keep a lookout for that golf ball size, or no, baseball sized hail.
No way, really?
Apparently.
According to Bobby.
That's what I heard.
Yes, I'm here. Good evening. Yeah, I'm here. Good evening.
Trusty Chris Meyer, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
I can. Trusty O'Reilly, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Excellent. Trusty Nora, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Amy. Thank you.
Excellent. Trusty O'Connor, can you hear me?
I can. You hear me?
Excellent. Yes, I can. And I know Trusty Michelle can't because she's not here.
All right, so we're all here and accounted for. If we could all say the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. I pledge the flag.
To the flag. The United States of America.
To the Republic.
To the Republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible.
All right, welcome, everyone.
We ought to work on that.
Well, I think it's a little bit hard, but imagine, imagine banned practice and things like that. I don't know how they're doing it. But someday, we're gonna be all back together. That's all I'm gonna say. It's gonna happen soon. The first item on the agenda is the Homage Associations. Is there anybody here from the Glenstone HOA such as Frank Mundane? What about Beaver Creek? Denise Steinman? If not, I'm gonna move to the next item on the agenda. I'd asked Chief Riddle, interim Chief Riddle, to join the meeting tonight. There was a fairly substantial fire last week. I know also Chief Smith is here as well. Thank you for joining from the countryside Fire Protection District. My, my concern was not to go blow by blow over, you know, their response to it because they did the best job they could, but more along the lines of to discuss the public safety aspects of burning right now since it's been so dry. So I know Fire Chief Riddle is probably gonna say a few words to us here. And then, you know, you may have some questions, but if you can take it away, that would be great.
Okay, Mayor, thanks. And sorry to have to meet everybody under these types of circumstances, but our message, I think, is consistent or should be consistent all down the line. And that is that everyone knows we're in a drought situation. We have ordinances in place, as does the village and the other villages that we help protect regarding open burning. And we would just encourage a unified front in this regard that especially during this time of drought and those issues that are all attendant to that, that we either stop all open burning or make sure that it is well within the confines of the ordinance and that we're notified or the village is notified. We give permission appropriate and in concert with the ordinances. And that these winds can, as you well know, especially the past couple of days, these winds are horrendous and they're gusty and it's easy for something to get out of control pretty quickly. So I think Fire District's message is, is pretty consistent in that regard.
Yeah, no, thank you for that. I know the incident occurred because somebody was burning, brushing their fire pit. And then, next thing you know, it started the roof on fire. And then from there, you know, it, they tried to extinguish it themselves. That wasn't successful and probably added to the delay. And next thing you know, you know, it's, the house is a total goner. So it's the second incident we had recently. And that's, you know, really what we wanted to talk about was just fire safety right now with being so dry. So I'll turn it over to the board to ask questions if, if they want to at this point. Any comments or questions from the board?
I just have a quick comment that I shared with you all. So I know I've read somewhere, you know, you wanna keep a fire only within, say if the wind outside is five to 10 miles an hour. I've noticed when my weather channel says 10 miles an hour, my little Boy Scout sense says that's still too windy. So I don't wanna ban it altogether, but people gotta really, like even 10 miles an hour. I look out there, that's too windy.
You know, this goes, this goes back to our previous discussion. And, and I think it's a shame we don't, we can't find someone who can teach people what the rules are. I know when we moved here, there were classes and we went to them and, and we've never had a problem. I had a next door neighbor, former trustee, who burned down five of my big trees because he didn't know what he was doing. And, 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 and in order to have a permit, I, I think there has to be some kind of learning experience before you get a permit to burn.
Yeah, this particular case, though, this particular case.
Boy Scouts don't.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. In this particular case, though, they were burning in their fire pit, right? The fire pit was close to the house and they, whatever they put in there, whatever material they put in there, next thing you know, it started the house on fire. But to your point, I think absolutely that's something we need to do, right? So.
Yeah, and some of my experiences included those welcome wagon types of packages that introduce new residents to the community or the fire districts that might have a blurb in there about those kinds of things that are germane to all of us. And we've got a.
Actually, after our last discussion on burning, I found an excellent, I think it was like a 10-page brochure on, on the safety of burning. And, and we put that out to the community now. And, and I hope people can follow it, but I also think the, the face-to-face has more value than. Just.
No, no argument there. And Ms. Kritzmeyer's point that, that a 10 mile an hour wind is a brisk wind. You know, the national standard is 15, but 10 miles an hour gets away from somebody real quick with a fire going and perhaps unattended for a minute or two and tragedy strikes. So we're all ears. If there's a, a way you think we could do this public education component a little bit better, we have a strong Fire Prevention Bureau in my view. And we're ramping up our public education efforts. We're, we're willing to try anything.
Well, let's, let's work on that.
Sure. I'll be absolutely happy to engage anybody that wants to give us some ideas and we'll move this forward.
Maybe, maybe we could put it on the calendar. Maybe, maybe still this season, but next February and March, as the season approaches and people who do this or are thinking of doing it could at least attend an actual burn or a Zoom meeting or something.
Frequently, people burn in the fall.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Yeah, I would say probably, no disrespect, Bobby, but 10, 10 pages might be more than some people wanna chew. We might need a, might need a smaller.
It might be the same place I found the baseball size golf ale.
I'm just saying, you know, but like something quick and then something deeper for people who really wanna peel it back.
It was, it was a really good brochure. It was very readable.
I have a question. When these kinds of things happen, does a letter go out from Village Hall under Bill, Bill or Bill's signature, just acknowledging the, the event? And if there's anything we can do to let us know?
I don't think there's any process in place.
We did answer a lot of questions during the event where people calling, actually people knocking on the door to get in, asking us what was going on. Of course, we had very limited information, but I think properly probably belongs to the fire district in terms of what information that they wish to, wish to distribute. But it's something we could consider, but there would have to be a coordinated effort with the fire district, obviously.
No, no.
I think she's meaning empathy.
I'm, I'm saying a personal letter that.
Oh, oh.
We're very sorry to, very sorry to hear about what happened at your, at your home. Our, you know, our hearts go out to you or our thoughts are with you. If there's anything we can do, please don't hesitate. Just something to acknowledge that this has happened to two of our residents now in the last month. I just think it would be a nice gesture. And I don't think it's a time to try and teach people anything, just to be a neighbor.
You know, with, with what the chief has said, are we at a point where, because of the lack of rain, are we at a point where we should not be burning anymore for a period of time?
If Jenny were here, she'd probably jump on you because of the buck thorn, but.
Well, it's supposed to rain tomorrow and I think the next day, but.
And it's more of, I think, as the Fire Chief, I would say no burning would be my preference because there's, there's not a big upside to somebody momentarily taking their eye off the ball. But that obviously is not gonna be an acceptable solution to everybody that lives in these areas that are used to that and need that and so forth. But I, I think maybe partnering with some education efforts, we, we may kind of bolster our website a little bit. It's very difficult to reach people that have never had a problem. If you've never called the fire department, if you've never called for an ambulance, it's very difficult to understand the risks perhaps until some tragedy like this occurs. So I, I think we have some, some path that we have to try to find to make that message clear to people. And if there's ever any doubt, to call us and we'll definitely give you the benefit of our opinion and experience and tell you what the ordinance is and what you have to do to comply. And beyond that, I don't know how much more we can do with it, but we're all ears.
If I can just chime in real quick too, for, for Countryside Fire District, just so you know, we, we ask that all residents call in any open burning requests the day that they do them. Pretty early in the morning, we do a pretty quick fire forecast of the weather, the conditions. And we'll let our dispatch center know that if people call in, letting us know that they're gonna be doing some open burning, that we've made it a red flag day and there won't be any burning allowed today. So if, if residents do call the dispatch centers, hopefully we can get to them the information to know that it's not a safe day to burn. You know, as, as I spoke with you guys last month, as a community, Long Groves, Long Groves is unique too because you guys are challenged in many places with water supply. That makes it difficult to keep these fires under control. And, and although cedar shake roofs are beautiful, they are definitely not ideal around open burning circumstances and can cause more problems than that, especially if they're not maintained and treated on a regular basis. So some education about all that, I think is really important. I do know that the county, Lake County and the unincorporated areas has been collecting information and data from fire districts for over a year now on open burning. When people, when we get called, whether they're legal open burns or illegal open burns, they just put out an email today to the, the community, asking for community input on open burning and yard waste options. So, you know, as Long Grove, the community that you are, that takes such pride in your conservancies and your, your lawns and your properties, I definitely encourage you as a, as a municipality to be engaged in those conversations at the county level too.
You know, I was just thinking though, we could very quickly put out a communication as soon as tomorrow to all residents. We are, whatever that TTY network is that we have, right? Just urging everyone until further notice not to burn. And if you are burning, you know, any, you know, any conservancies that requires a permit from the different fire production districts and just get it out there. What do you think?
I, I think that's a great idea, but I, I also like Long Grove's Red Flag Day, which would be if we require people to call, they have to call them that day that they're gonna burn. And if the fire department can say yes or no, and, and, and I think that that would help a great deal if we required that they would call you and you tell them whether they can do it today or not.
We, we have that in place already. And unless they call, you know, that, that's where it falls apart. So, but we do have that in place, just like Chief Smith and Countryside has that. It's almost identical. So we mirror that.
Well, I'll get it in the newsletter tomorrow, but, but I think your idea, Bill, is even better.
Yeah, Bill, we should, we should get that, because that goes to everyone, just get a note out. And we don't have to give any level of detail, but yeah, Chris, you wanna say something? Yep.
Well, just, just kind of a question. Is there any considered consideration for the size of property of any of the residents? I mean, burning on three and a half acres is very different than burning on one acre. So when you call the FPD, I mean, you know, there's gotta be, I would think there's gotta be a little bit more to it than just, you know, what's the wind speed that day? I mean, if there's nobody around me and I'm in the corner of my three and a half acres, it's, it's gotta be different, I would think. So I think there's a question. I don't know.
So, so many of the ordinances, and I don't have, I'm sorry, Long Grove's right in front of me, but they specify distance from structures and distance roadways. So 50 feet from a structure at a minimum, 100 feet from a roadway. Smoke can't go across roadways, obstruct any sort of vision of drivers. There's, there's a lot of rules that are actually in the ordinance that really almost make open burning and, and especially lots of two acres or smaller difficult to do legally by following all the rules. So even, even just having a water source handy, depending on how, how large of an area you're burning, is not adequate for the area of people burn. So, you know, we, we put out the information in our brochures, it's on our website. You know, there's, there's a lot of information in the permit applications, but getting everyone to follow every rule to the T sometimes can be a real challenge. But, you know, hopefully, unfortunately, at the expense of some people's property, there's some lessons learned that can be shared with the community, hopefully in a manner that doesn't, you know, make these homeowners feel any worse about what happened than they already feel. And people maybe think twice about potentially burning down their multi-million dollar mansion, so.
Well, Chris, anything else?
I just had one more thing, Mayor, if you don't mind. If any of the trustees or members of the public that are listening to this event here wanna contact me in my office or stop by and, and discuss any further details on open burning or whatever relative to the fire district, I'll be happy to entertain those.
Thank you, Chief.
I offer that for my jurisdiction as well, so.
Thank you, Chief Smith. I appreciate that. Well, I'm gonna keep us moving unless there's other questions. I mean, we're not gonna go blow by blow. It was quite a fire. And the good news is no one was injured really, except the, you know, the one resident got hurt when he was trying to put the fire out. But other than that, it, it, it's amazing. No one got hurt, no firemen, no nothing. So thanks for your great work. We appreciate it and thanks for being here tonight.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Pleasure. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep us moving. The next item on the agenda is to continue public hearing on the draft fiscal year 2021 village budget. The hearing is being held in accordance with the state statute and notice duly published in the Daily Herald. This hearing has been continued from the village board meeting on March 23rd and April 13th, at which time the village board heard public comments on the proposed general fund and capital fund elements of the proposed fiscal year 2021, 22 budget, as well as afforded the opportunity for initial comment on the other funds portion of the fiscal year 2021, 22 budget. Tonight, we're, we will be seeking further public comment on the other funds portion of the budget, which has been available for the public to review for more than 10 days before tonight's hearing. Upon hearing any further public comment, we expect to close the budget hearing and consider the fiscal year 2021, 22 budget. And so far as trustee Kritzmeyer and staff have previously presented other, the other funds portion of the budget, upon reopening public hearing tonight, we will proceed directly to hearing members of the public to comment on the other funds budget. And Bill, I just wanna make sure that that's okay. And Denise, are you okay with that? Or do you wanna present anything? No? Okay, good.
I think we're good, Bill.
All right, just double checking for our conversation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So if you wish to comment during tonight's public hearing, please use the raise hand function or otherwise, you know, raise your hand or indicate some other way that you wanna speak. I ask that you wait to speak until I have acknowledged you to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. We may limit you to three minutes, in which case you'll have another chance to speak once everyone else has done so. Note that public comment period is for comments and not for questions and answers. After the public comments are complete, we will have a motion to formally close the hearing. Once the hearing is closed, the village board may then discuss, may have a discussion regarding the budget. And then the village board will consider its adoption. With those introductory comments, I now formally reopen the budget public hearing. Does anyone have any comments? I think that's a no. That's a long pregnant pause there.
That's the sound of satisfaction.
So seeing that no one wishes to comment, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? And it'll be a roll call vote. All right, so move by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee O'Connor, and that was a roll call.
Trusty O'Connor. Hi, trustee Borowski.
Yes.
Trusty Kritzmeyer?
Yes.
Trusty O'Reilly?
Hi.
Trusty Nora?
Yes.
And trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. So I guess now I open this matter to the village board for any comments on the budget at this point.
I'm good.
There really are no, there's no changes since last time.
Yeah, I don't have a real question, comment, but just, just kind of a thought. You know, I guess I'm still the, the three and a half acre guy, right? Still struggling to do all my branches that come down every year and continuously come down. How do we solve the problem? If we don't want people burning stuff in their backyards, what do we do with it? I know the easy answer is landscaper, but honestly, it drives me nuts. And is there anything we could do to have village-wide cleanup days? Couple days a year, spring and fall, every branch you could drag to the side of the road will come by, pick it up, scoop it up, shred it up. You know, I, I mean, I know we don't have real public works department, but we've, you know, I'm just wondering if there's something we could do differently going forward where we take some of the money we do have and apply it to, you know, a residential benefit per se. Yeah, I don't know if it's a stupid idea. I don't know if 90% of our residents have landscapers who do haul stuff away. I don't know how many residents live on, you know, one to three to five acre parcels. I don't have any of that data, but I'm just wondering like if there's something we could do to find a happy compromise place for the people who have to burn or not. Have, have to is the wrong word, but.
Right now, I think the issue is it's not that you can't burn, it's just not burning right now.
Understood, understood that point. But, but we are talking about a budget which we could allocate some resource to and, you know, and come up with an alternative proposal. But I realize it's kind of late in the discussion point to do that, but I just, just random thought. So I'll just, I'll just be quiet. So I don't really have a question or looking for a response, just planting a seed, you know?
Yeah, it's something.
Yeah, I like the seed, Chris, you know, some level of outreach because I, I'm with you also. You know, I, I have partial landscapers, but I can't afford to have them do all the stuff that, you know, takes on buck thorn and stuff and burning is really what does it.
Right.
But I also pay attention to the wind and keep it far away. And, I mean, I have a log cabin, so I don't have cedar shake roofing, but I pay very much attention to where embers might be.
I didn't know you too have a log cabin. How about that? Yes, I don't remember that. But yeah, I mean, that's the point, right? And to the point earlier about size of acreage, I get it. You got a, you got an acre lot. You're in this pretty heavy subdivision. You don't wanna be doing anything like that. And you probably won't be because it's all probably mowed down, you know? But, but yeah.
I can tell you, I rent, I rent periodically, I rent the wood chipper. So I'm the, it's not Fargo in my yard, but you know, I'm just.
That's good.
Yeah, that's good, right? But I, you know, I put the, the branches in the wood chipper, so that, that does a pretty nice mulch bed, but I don't have a yard like yours, I'm sure, so.
I get it. Understood. Yeah, like I, like I said, I'm not really looking for a reaction, just planting a seed tonight. So thank you. Sorry to interrupt the budget discussion, though.
No, thank you. I think it's something to think about, so. But I think going back to the task at hand, you know, there, there is one presentation that we can do before we pass the budget, which is the ClearGov one, or if just, if you guys are in a position or feel like you wanna pass the budget right now, I would be looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2021, 22 budget.
Is this, I'm sorry, do you want, do you wanna do the ClearGov first or not? I, I wasn't following.
It's in the budget, so it's.
Are they two separate issues?
Yeah, yeah, we, we left, because we, the last budget presentation, we wanted to streamline it a bit, so we left it open. It is in the budget. We left it open for the purpose of any final questions. But it's a, it's a program that's been reasonably, very well vetted by the, by the finance team. I think President Jacobs was able to monitor some of that. We just left it on there a bit, but it is in the budget. It requires no further discussion unless trustees have individual questions.
I, I just have one question, just a clarification question, actually. There was a computation that of how much staff signed the, this, this app, it's an app, right? Would save. And, and I. Pardon me?
Yeah, I think you got feedback.
Oh, oh. And the, the, the one, the first computation was at $100 an hour. That saved us 12,500 and obviously 200 an hour. It saves us twice that. So is, is, is it then therefore safe to say that this is revenue neutral in that it saves us 12.5, but it's costing 13 something? But the biggest, the bigger thing, the bigger thing, it's more efficient and it saves, it just makes everything much easier and ties things up for us.
I would agree with that completely. Rita, go ahead, Ann.
No, I was just gonna say, yeah, all, all of what you said, all of what you said. It's, it's staff time, it's the outside accounting time, it's volunteer time. Denise has, you know, Denise is running point on all of that. It's great.
No, I was just thinking about that right before we started, is that it really is kind of a neutral as far as the cost, but then you're, you're getting this, you know, just augmenting this, our budget process so much in the way of adding, you know, the, the ADA compliance and also the GOFA, you know, the government officers finance criteria are like just embedded in there. So you're getting so much more for that neutral is, is how I see it.
And it just seems tons more efficient.
It takes out a lot of manual stuff, a lot of manual stuff that not only takes time, but introduces errors. And, you know, less than we wanna do is be confusing for, we don't wanna be confusing internally or externally.
Right. And, and, and who will be trained on this?
Well, we're gonna have everybody on staff much more aware of the budget, budget responsibilities, budget accountability. In terms of board training, I think we'll make it available.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not talking.
We don't, we don't have more training.
No, 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 no.
The intent is the, everybody on staff's gonna be much more conversant, much more understanding of their budget process. And the reporting is gonna greatly assist us. Denise will probably be our quarterback on this, but everybody's gonna be, have a level of competency that.
Everybody will be able to sit down and use it if need be.
That's my goal, you know?
One really nice aspect of this is that there is a common workplace, like online work place because one of the challenges with having an Excel document is like essentially that, you know, sending it off here, sending it off there. that, you know, sending it off here, sending it off there, which one are we using? And ClearGov creates this beautiful audit trail of everything that's happening, who's touching it, what was changed, create like different budgets within. So if somebody's interested in like, hey, I'm thinking about, you know, I want to add this, and they call it a particular budget, you can work within that one, but then you have, you can then choose which one is going to be our actual draft budget and which one is the final, but that workspace that everybody is working in, it's just that collaborative piece, I think is, is huge.
Great. Thank you.
All right, so I'm.
I would move that we adopt this budget.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
So moved by trustee Kritzmeyer, seconded by trustee O'Reilly, right?
Yes.
That's a roll call.
Trustee O'Connor?
Hi.
Trustee Nora?
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer?
Hi.
And trustee Borowski?
Hi.
Okay, carried. We got the minimum four votes that were needed, so right, Vic, we're good. All right, so now the next item on the agenda is to discuss ClearGov. So Denise, do you want to?
Bill, Bill, could you back up?
Sure.
You got four votes?
No, I got five. I was just, I got a total of five. I was basically Vic's comments to me were that we needed a super majority to approve.
Okay.
We got, it was all eyes, motion carried, and I confused you, and I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. That was just meant for Vic.
It couldn't be three to two just because Jenny's not here.
No, 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 he said it's four, four people voted for it.
Five people voted for it, it's all eyes.
I had passed a note to Bill.
It was my little thing, telling Vic I read his email, that's all. Never mind, sorry.
We're good.
I apologize. So now that we already had the presentation on ClearGov, do we want to discuss it some more, right? Denise, do you want to, what, you know, do you, do you want to go through?
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know how long, but I think there's value in having Denise go through this for the public, just to be able to say what we're looking for in transparency. You know, it doesn't need to be the full metal jet, but I think it'd be very valuable for the public and for the record.
All right, Denise, I'm going to share my second screen. It's got a website on it, and then maybe I can let you direct me through it. Is that what the?
Actually, if you could go to the other email that I had sent you, it was the PowerPoint. I have it too, but if you could share that one.
No, I thought it was just the website. I got confused.
No, that's, that's just, that's an example.
Oh, okay, got it, that's an example.
So, and we can skip through a couple of the, but I think there are some important aspects that might be.
Let me just find it really quick, hold on a second.
Sure.
It'll be there in one second. I thought, I was all organized, but not apparently. Let's see, and it was the one, the PowerPoint presentation, cleverly labeled, there you go, all right. You know, the, you get the duplicate emails, and sometimes I, I skip over one and miss the other, so, all right, so I have the PowerPoint, I'm going to put it on my screen. And move. And share it. If you're okay, I'm just going to do it in the non-presentation mode.
Yep, that's fine, and there's a couple we'll skip right away because we've really already discussed them, yep.
So let me go back to the Zoom here, share screen. And hopefully that's clear enough, everyone can see it.
Yep, that's perfect. So you can skip that. And you can actually, well, this one, let's, let's talk a little bit about this one, just because it's the idea of that, why it is that this fits so well with sort of village philosophy and is that, that Long Grove is, has maintained a small staff and has outsourced a lot of the important, you know, essential services, like the list there, the village attorney, engineer, public safety, permitting, things like that. And also the way our website is set up, it really aligns so well with ClearGov in the way that, the way we have things set up already with online payments and permitting information. We actually, we maintain as the village some of those things, but MuniCode actually maintains a few of those, like the village code of ordinances, we, that's a paid service. So this is just showing kind of the alignment of seeking an expert, which is ClearGov for local government budgeting, and that it also aligns very, very well with our website and the way, kind of the flow of our BSNA accounting services that kind of, it's basically flowing in, and actually, if you want to go ahead, I want to show, Ann created a really great map, that one, or actually, yeah, that one. So if you can see, if, if as ClearGov, the BSNA accounting and budgeting is at the bottom there, and then also the BSNA building and permitting, those all flow into these different financial services. So ClearGov is one of those that would be, would flow actually back and forth between Clear, between ClearGov, so all of that information is the input, and then that would actually flow up into what's called the digital budget book that essentially would, it's like a web area where then that's where residents can actually see all of those wonderful graphs and, I mean, texts and where they can actually drill down into information. So it's the same as Ann pointed out on here, the point and pay, same idea where there's this flow between the BSNA accounting services and then into point and pay and then into the online payment page on the website. So it's just, it's just a really good fit with the, the philosophy and services that we already have. So if you could go back one slide, yes. So just to make everybody aware, what it, the, the village is proposing to purchase three modules, and it's the operational budgeting, the digital budget book, and then the transparency module. And the operation budgeting is where it really all happens, where, that is where, that synergy between BSNA accounting flows into ClearGov, and that's where, and we, ClearGov helps us to kind of create this budget. And, you know, changes made, changes are made in there, and that's where all that's happening. The digital budget book is actually where it's the cloud-based web area that presents the budget to the public, and that is actually a link on the website, say on the finance page, that you would link into this web-based area. So then that's where people can really drill down into the information. And it's more of, instead of having a document, you really have an experience, you know, where you're actually getting to like look at different aspects. And then the transparency tool or module is, it's both where we can then, once that budget is built, that we can do like quarterly updates and, you know, the actuals versus the budget and really see how we're doing throughout the year. But what's really neat about the transparency module is that that's actually where we can create these other dashboards that are department dashboards. And maybe if you could skip ahead, we can, I can explain that a little bit more, keep going, right here. So these are the, some of the ideas, and these are just ideas of different department dashboards. And let's take example of public safety. If we had the Lake County Sheriff data, which really comes to us very, very much raw data in an Excel sheet, we could actually have ClearGov inputs that information from, from an Excel sheet, and we can create a dashboard that then makes that data really useful, you know, where we can, we can do different things with it. We can do that also with, you know, capital projects, I think would be fantastic, because we could actually, like say, North Kruger Road repaving, we can have, monitor the progress of Kruger Road and, you know, videos or, or pictures or, and then, you know, different data can go in there also, so we could use it for building permits and communication. So I think that's, there's just so much potential there. And as I've said before, this is again ADA compliant, all of it, we don't have to, you know, that doesn't have to be a concern, which it always is a concern to me, that, you know, things we're putting up there, even the Excel sheets and things, and it, it gives it, instead of like the village doing things like that, trying to create these dashboard, it gives it a even look, very professional and, you know, a very nice feel to all those pages. So if maybe you want to go to the benefits, back to, I think it was.
Oh, back to.
Yeah, actually, that one, the benefits. We already discussed a little bit of this, but I just, I really want to point out that the, both the internal and external transparency are really, really important. And, you know, external, I always think is, you know, that this is why, you know, we want to have a, a budget that everybody understands. Anybody can go to it and understand it, and we're going to increase that civic participation, and like I said, that alignment with those GFOA criteria. But one thing I thought a lot about is the internal transparency, is that understanding when, when you have something like, you know, a village manager leaving or somebody else leaving, that you have this beautiful paper, you know, electronic trail of everything that's happened, and you can actually archive all of this information right in the document where you touch something, and it's like, it'll give you, you know, you can actually archive the ordinance that is attached to it, or, you know, things like that, that, that would be just, that's a really big deal. And, and, and the reduction in errors is so important because that, we're doing all of this autumn, you know, input, manual input, and, you know, you have formula errors that can happen, and you can have input errors, and especially when you have people inputting over and over again, different things. So it really reduces that. So like, like this last, you know, statement, the more efficient and effective budget building and cash flow reporting and forecasting, and then we can, you know, be looking at those actuals versus budgets way more, and it's, it's, it's using our time so much more efficiently and effectively, wisely, smarter. So, so any, does anybody have any questions?
Denise, who do you, who do you see using this besides your staff? Do you see us using this, the public using this?
Um, it's, you're using it in the way of that you will be viewing it in the, the web-based budget book. So you're actually going to, you're going to be able to see this. And, you know, Bill, you could put up that other page that you had brought up before. You don't have to, but it, that, that is actually a live budget of, of a city in Illinois, and you can kind of see the look of what it was. But I don't think as far as like really, you know, we can decide anybody, and there are people even who maybe aren't inputting on the budget, but they, they can, they can actually send information to us, like somebody who, they're not a part of the budget team, but they could actually send, you know, messages, they can be a part of it, so.
Could I, can I add? I don't see trustees as in, so the three modules, the operational budgeting, that's building the budget. That's not going to be every trustee, not at all, other than potentially reviewing. But this is the way, instead of getting some voluminous spreadsheet and trying to go through all of that, this starts at the high-level pictures, and you can, by the way, you can adjust if you're a pie chart person or a stack bar chart person, you can have the view you like. And then, so Bobby to review, you would go in and start this way, and then you can click through and get down to the same level of detail you saw in the spreadsheet before, but you, you drive the experience, and it doesn't like overwhelm you with the details at the beginning. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, it does. But I, I was, I was wondering if, if our public will be using this, will they have access to this?
They will have exactly this, this same view of the big picture and the ability to drill down and see the detail that that user wants.
So we have no secrets left.
Well, I'll tell you where the secrets are, if you will. And this is a lot of the time that's amazing is in building the budget and going through and say there's staff turnover or trustee turnover, where did you get that, you know, how did you come to that budget forecast? So the decisions don't go away, but you can archive, and now you can say, oh, last year, this is how we came to that budget. So certainly there will be internal things like that, you know, that, that makes sense, that, you know, kind of how the sausage was made, but everybody has the same view of the sausage.
Chris, you had a question, right?
Yeah, I did have a couple of questions. So in this process, what other alternatives were considered?
I don't, I have not seen other, we didn't go digging very deeply. I will say the interaction here with our accounting software was highly attractive, that it's got the two-way in and out, so it'll take, takes all of the actuals in there and eliminates paying the accountant to do all of the manual typing when we do set a budget. Because right now, what we just passed, she's going to have to manually enter all of it.
She being who?
Our, our day-to-day accountant, Debbie Smith, who works for Sidler.
Okay, and is that, is that where the cost savings that is quoted is coming from? And who are we not going to pay now that we're buying this software?
That's part of it, and I will tell you, I, I've donated a whole lot of time free, and that's not right.
Yeah, I know, but donated time shouldn't, donated time shouldn't be included in a slide that says cost savings, because it's not really cost savings, right?
But if we're going to have somebody else do this, I, I understand that, yes, that's part of the cost savings. It's also, if we're having employees do manual spreadsheet work when they could be doing higher order, more important, more impactful work, that's a saving.
I'm not discounting that, I'm not discounting that if the employees are, you know, capable and keep, in keeping with our strategy that we set for them. Last, last question, maybe last question. So I'm trying to understand the quote initial period that the proposal's written on. It looks to me like this is a four-year deal. Is that really what we're saying, is the initial period is legally defined as? So we're locking into a four-year deal? Is that what we're saying here?
We're not locking into a four-year deal, but we're locking into a four-year price, so prices don't increase until after the fourth year. So we can, we can exit. I think it's like a 30-day out.
After the initial period, so where do we define the initial period in here? The term initial period, that's, that's a Vicism, maybe.
Yes.
So over in the agreement itself, where?
As, as we read that, there's an initial period, almost like an acceptance period for the software, and I believe that's the 30-day period. Once that 30-day period has expired, and if we have then accepted the software, it is a four-year term.
Yeah, but there's an auto renewal, right?
The auto renewal is after the four-year term.
Oh, it is, okay.
And you have to do 60 days prior to your, you know, the auto renewal time, is you'd have to let them know that you do not want to continue.
So it is a four-year agreement?
Yep.
Why, why would we want to go and no-bid a four-year contract that's equivalent value of $54,000? I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with that concept.
Well, not, not all these are, are fungible commodities. I know the team spent a fair amount of time looking at this ClearGov and was fascinated by some of the opportunities, but there, there, some of these softwares are not totally fungible and interactive, replaceable. And this is a, this is one we think will elevate the level of reporting and accountability, increase the accuracy, reduce the manual entries, which are error-prone in of themselves and look like a really good package. But unlike, this is much closer to a professional services contract than a commodity, and we saw the opportunities to, to gain value from the, from the relationship. And frankly, if it's working at all, we don't want to leave it even in four years. If it's not working at all, we're going to need to be creative and say, we have to get it corrected and, and realigned to our needs and aggressively seek through contract management what are, what's our rights and opportunities.
Thank you, understand that, but it seems that we're locking into a four-year deal where I'm sure there's going to be other software that's, other software, other staff members with actual programming capability could be brought on board down the road. You know, we don't know what's going to happen between now and four years from now. I just really find it just really challenging to justify signing a four-year deal that we can't get out of. Without, without seeking alternative sources or without seeking alternative bids, whether it's a service agreement or whether it's a product agreement or a commodity agreement.
I don't know how to say this, I, I'm just trying to figure out in my head. I don't think it serves us well, I'm not discounting the four-year thing that you're saying, Chris, I, I get that. But I don't think it serves us well to say that we want to try and find somebody who can program. I, I just, I don't, that, that viewpoint of, well, can we do it ourselves? There's a level of doing things ourselves, and then there's a lot. There's a level of doing things ourselves and then there's a level of, I think, using tools that take advantage of scale where everybody is helped. Nowhere, this is somebody who does this for lots of other municipalities. And we don't have to go through the, you know, the the construction of all of this. We kind of did that a little bit on some other things like our website. And I, I don't think that, I don't think that route serves us particularly well. That doesn't, that doesn't at all negate your, your concern about four years.
And the only other thought, you know, if if that's a concern of the board is that we approve it with a provisional. Um, cancellation penalty, then we go back to the provider and see if they. Will allow us to do that, I don't know Vic, what you think about that, so?
Certainly, the, the board can identify anything to um. Uh, negotiate this, I, I think that we've only looked at the documents as they have been presented to the village. From uh, from ClearGov.
But I mean, we could approve it tonight with some, you know, language in there, it says that, you know, the only. Caveat is that the village manager will negotiate an out clause if uh. Doesn't meet our needs after whatever period of time that is, it would sever appropriate if it's a year or two, I mean. If you start using it, you're not going to want to get rid of it because we're. You know, our data is going to be in there, right, so it's going to.
I, I, I think one thing that. Other municipalities have experienced is that once you incorporate this into your daily operations. The extraction is. Both difficult and expensive from a uh, from a personnel perspective. And so, you know, the, the important thing is to do a heavy study upfront, which is what I understand has been going on. And it is, it is a program from what I understand that integrates well with what we are. Otherwise utilizing either in-house or through, through various consultants. And I, I think that the concern about the duration of it. Is an important and genuine one, I think that the. Uh, the, the practical aspects of the term, um, and and I should mention. If there is a breach and and breach is something that can always be. Raised in different contexts such as it's not performing in the way it was intended to. Uh, that is a different means to get out of it, but I think what you're seeking, Chris, and I, I think. Is something that can be raised is an ability. After the first year or any one year of it. To have some kind of termination and I don't know whether ClearGov would. Accept that or maybe accept it at a termination price. So, you know, maybe it's a ten percent penalty, I don't know what they would, you know, what they would be looking at, but that's something that can be explored. It's really what the, the board's inclination is on that.
Well, how does the rest of the board feel? So that's the question.
Well, I, I think to, to Chris's point. If, if ClearGov, and and we talked to these people for the website. Um, they, they seem to be, you know, quality, upstanding, decent people to do business with. If, if it could be negotiated into the contract that there is, there could be a termination clause. Ninety days notice, sixty days notice, whatever it is. Um. And if, you know, if they want, if if it would be penalty free, that would be outstanding, because. Really, it's not in our best interest time wise, again, to enter into something for two years and then. Reinvent the wheel starting year three. You know, it it benefits us as well as them, but if if we could write it in and it's no big shakes, then that takes care of. Um, the, the different, the. Problems or issues Chris has with it, you know, I don't see a problem with that. We may never, we may never invoke it. If it could be put in the contract, then he sleeps better at night and. What the heck?
Bobby, you want to comment? I'm just going to go around the horn really quick.
Uh, I, I'm fine with that, um. But I'm, I'm thinking, what if they say no, then, then, then do we still go ahead?
That's a question for the board, right?
Us nothing to ask.
Well, that's, that's true, um, and and is there any? Is there any problem with prolonging this to our next meeting?
Well, that's a good question.
It, it would seem to me if the board wants to approve this with the uh, condition that there is an out. And that's not something that ClearGov is amenable to. Then we can re-bring the resolution to the board next meeting. Without that condition, if that's what the board wants to, wants to consider.
But could you answer the question about delaying this, does that harm us in any way?
It, it does, because we're in a queue with some other municipalities very eager to implement this system. And, and we've already had a little bit of a delay in terms of the queue. To get us positioned that when we're going to implement and I can't remember the. The best implementation date, where we stand right now Denise, where it is, but we've, we've gotten kicked back. At least one cycle period because they've got more business and more interest from municipalities that want to move ahead. Um, you know, one, one of the, this is a, this is a staff transformational issue, as you, as everybody knows, we were. Much more management centric in terms of development and reporting and managing the budget, that's. Completely transformed now to the senior management team and frankly, everybody on the staff. Is going to be confident and capable learning it and to manage this, this system. So it is important that we get it sooner rather than later. To uh, to get us in the queue and maintain our position in the queue, but I, unless I'm mis- misunderstood Denise. I think we've been kicked back at least once or twice on this to uh, give us time to evaluate the system.
Yes, we, we have once, it's June, June one right now, um, but he had said that. Even what it is in the contract right now, what it says, he said, because we haven't signed yet, that could be bumped out, um, you know, July one is, was a possibility, so.
And and there's a chance they'll say, hey, we signed and somebody, somebody got out and we're back in the queue, but that, that's how, how we define the risk. And frankly, the eagerness to roll this out and get started with it, and it's not going to be intuitive to everybody to learn it. And to develop the skill set that they understand it. So there's that, you've got that risk as well, uh, that, that you need to roll this out and you need to be comfortable with it. People that aren't normally comfortable, we're bringing uh, a community development on board later this year. Um, that person needs to be understanding of this issue, we're bringing on a village manager soon. That has to be understood and the training component goes into it right now, but the, the most capable people right now that have a good. Clear understanding of it, and I don't want to say working knowledge, is uh, is Denise and Anne, because they've been closest to the. Analysis and assessment and that needs to be broadened in the circle, so.
Okay, so, so Vic, correct me if I'm wrong, we can a- approve this with. I don't know how you were phrasing it, with the ask of a, a year after a year, we can get an out?
Uh, yes, and I mean, it's something that it could be every, you know, we can always get out upon ninety days or even, you know. Hundred, you know, whatever they're willing to do, have an out provision, so it rolls with the contract. Um, and, you know.
But if they don't give it, we, we would still stay with the four years.
It is a four year deal if we approve it as is, um. And I suppose if you want to have the resolution be to approve the contract. Uh, subject to the, to the interim village manager, uh. Seeking a modification to provide for uh, an interim termination opportunity. That could be it and, uh, you know, that could be either just on, on Bill's discretion. As to how the negotiations go or maybe in consultation with the village president or however you want to do that. Alternatively, you can say we approve it subject to an out provision, period. And if they say no, then we come back to the board with a uh, a second bite at the apple.
I, I like the first one better. Um, and, and I, I don't know if that's the preference of the rest of the board.
I have no problem with it, but I mean, Chuck, are you okay with that? We haven't heard from you.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I mean, I'd actually be fine with just approving it straight up. I, I understand the mindset of wanting the out clause. But everything I've heard so far suggests that once we're in. Backing out's not going to be easy. So we have to ask ourselves that as well. And Denise, can you clarify, we've got uh, uh, some period of time in the beginning. Where we can.
We do. We have the thirty days, so once we have everything uh, in the system. We can actually see what this is going to look like, you know, and, and, um, so yes, we have that in the, in the, in the, that initial.
See, for, for my money, I'd say extend that to sixty days. Give us a little bit more time to evaluate on the front end versus being hung up on an out clause, maybe possibly. Two, three years out. Just my thought.
Yeah, if the board, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
If the board is inclined to, to take that route, maybe we just leave it open ended. And let Bill see, Bill Balling, see where the conversation goes. So it can be a motion to approve subject to, to Bill Balling seeking interim termination rights for the village.
Are you okay with that?
How is, Chris, how is that for you?
Doesn't work, I won't support it, but go ahead, you may have enough votes, you get a motion in a second, I think.
And you're, you're, could you just help me out one more time? It's just, you, you, are you saying that? Four years in the, the tech world is a long time and that this could become useless to us? Or we're locked in and we find out it doesn't do what we had hoped it would do?
I think both of those are, are partially my reasons for the hesitation. I think technology change of it changes very rapidly, so something new, better can come along, you never know. I understand the point that once you're kind of in, you're in, but who knows, right? I mean, the company may be bankrupt or sold next week, we don't know. Um, and also, um, you know, the fact that we didn't go out and do any competitive and now, I, I don't know, any is a strong word. But we don't have any competitive bids on this thing, it's a, it's a four year no bid contract, we're locked into with, oh, by the way, an automatic three percent escalation clause. So tha- that's, that's my concern, I, I just don't think, um, this contract's really written. And, um, I don't know, I want to say true sense of partnership, but it seems like it's very one sided.
I would say, I, a lot of this is, they, they spend a lot of, it's a lot of services upfront where they help us massage and get the things going. So to me, thirty versus sixty at the front end, candidly, I don't think that's going to be viable, I don't think that makes sense. I think it's more of the after the one year, if we could negotiate something there, that to me makes sense, knowing that. This is going to be working with them to get all our data in, get the budget up there, get it mapped, you know, and, and then, then things could become much more automatic. Um, on the bidding stuff, I'll tell you honestly, Chris, all of those hours there were real. We were doing the budget, we didn't have time, I didn't have time to go shopping.
I understand, I, I understand that completely. Again, I, Bill, I, I don't know what, if you have enough votes or not, and I maybe just that, that guy tonight, but, um, but yeah. I mean, to me, it just, it just seems odd that we're doing it this way.
Well, um, I, I liked the, um. You know, the motion to allow Bill Balling to negotiate something on our behalf, because I think it is a smart thing to have in there, so. Um, however, that wants to be worded, but I think somebody should make a motion.
I, I, I did make a motion.
Bobby had a motion to approve subject to Bill Balling seeking interim termination rights for the village.
Okay, seconded anyone?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Nora, it's a roll call as well.
Uh, trustee Borowski.
No.
Trustee Kitzmaier.
Yes.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Yes.
Trustee Nora.
Yes.
And trustee O'Connor.
Yes.
All right, motion, motion carried, thank you. Moving on to the next item. Is, and I'm going to ask for a little bit of help, I'm going to call Lifeline in. Um, but this is a resolution establishing the position of the director of operations for the village of Long Grove. And confirming the appointment of Mr. Denise Rosenquist effective May seventeenth, twenty twenty one, and I don't know if. Um, interim manager Balling wants to present this or?
Sure, yeah, I'd, I'd be happy to, yeah, this is, uh, actually, it's a pretty, um. Pretty comfortable recommendation from my standpoint, we, you know, we've been assessing capabilities and directions for the staff. And then we know for sure that on the planning side, we're going to be elevating, um. Uh, that position to a, recommending it to a director of community development. To get us a broader linkage into community planning and input from the more technical side of the village planner role. Uh, the, uh, the second component is recognizing that the redundancy in services and capabilities. The senior management team is really important and, um, Denise has really been on my, uh, uh. Sheet for a, a number of months in terms of someone that has very high performance capabilities. And has finished out her, um, both her graduate studies and an internship with remarkable achievement and honors. And warrants a, uh, consideration for this position as a promotional position. And fits in very well with our overall program. So that the senior core management team will have a strong community development. A strong, um, uh. Operations management structure, and I'll get to the detail, and a very solid village manager. And with that inner core team with a proper allocation of tasks. I think they're, they are well, the, the staff will be well positioned to advance the, uh, the, uh, policy agenda of the village and the services. Uh, one of the core as- aspects of the operations manager is to assist the village manager in the assessment. And evaluation of our contracted services, which is where the predominant amount of money is spent in delivering our services. Uh, we simply, uh, don't do that enough and we haven't had enough capacity. To deal with the operational assessments, the contract management modifications. And that's really a two to probably three person job in total to, to achieve that. Uh, you know, Long Grove has gotten a long way with a very, very small payroll and, uh, very good, uh. Uh, and, and it's several very solid, uh, contractors that have helped us in core services and professional services. But we can demonstrate a very good record to the board or to the public. That we have evaluated those services, that we've restructured and tail of those services, and we have an ongoing assessment function. And that's where I see the role of the, um. Of the director of operations to provide a strong assist to that. I also see in this, uh, as a, as an additional skill set. Is that Denise has a highly technical proficiency. To implement, manage and assess some of these systems that we're talking about, including this, uh, the ClearGov initiative that we, we just. Conditionally authorized, uh, and that was another talent set that is not solid, uh, other than, uh, Denise's position. And so I think this is a, a great fit for the organization, I think you will see remarkable. Direction and improvement as we round out the core staff. Uh, for the, what I'll call the three senior management positions in the village. And Denise has clearly, uh, demonstrated her competencies. Both academically and operationally, through, through the internship to warrant this promotional opportunity, and I would recommend its approval. We did, we did put together a job description and you will see a few more of these in the upcoming weeks in terms of what the expectations are. What the basis of performance evaluation will be, what our operational targets and goals will be. For each position in the village, but certainly this is, uh, this is a very important position for us and it's gonna. Um, it's going to elevate our, uh, our, our performance significantly. It also will play a increasing role in the, um, uh, in the orientation of the new village manager. That is, uh, coming on board shortly. Uh, and provide a transition piece and, you know, one of the reasons that we pushed so hard to get ClearGov in here. Is we wanted to present the inbound manager with a real budget system, a, a, a real reporting and documentation. And I think we can still achieve that, uh, with the direction that the, uh, that the board has provided us this evening. And, 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 and that's the direction and focus of our staff and in, in, into the future. And I think it will, um, it will reinforce the board's desire to have accountable, um, contracted services. To have a, a, a vision and coordination on planning and strategy going forward with this senior management team. And frankly, Denise is a, is a very strong part of that and, uh, and warrants consideration as a promotional activity. As a promotional, uh, uh, action.
Uh, comments from the board?
I, I, I think it's so sad that we're not in person. Because we should be having. because we should be having the cake and champagne and photographers and, and all kinds of things because we're so proud of our intern and, and how she has bloomed. And, and, and so it's just with sadness that, that we're not celebrating your success the way we'd like to.
Thank you, Bobby. That is, that is so nice.
I think it's a, I think, go ahead, Rita.
I said, ah, she didn't mean it.
What?
You're the best. You're absolutely the best. I'm thrilled for you. Thank you for speaking with us.
You have to buy the first round at Buffalo Creek Brewery.
I think, I think the position makes a lot of sense. I like the structure of it. I appreciate the idea of having much, much more cross-training at, you know, it, within the different, the staff. I think that makes a ton of sense as a position, and I'm thrilled that Denise could be the person for that. I think, I, you know, you're, it's been nothing but high performance from you every step of the way. So I'm really glad for both of those, the position and the person.
Thank you.
Well, what's really neat is that not only is she doing superlative work for us, but she's getting these grades in school that are pretty impressive. So I would make a motion to.
Hold on a second. Chris didn't have a chance to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Bill. I, I find this conversation a little bit awkward. Frankly, because the, this particular job description has not been discussed by us in executive session where we're more open and free to make some comments, to modify, to change, adjust, et cetera. I find this conversation awkward because as we entered into the village manager search, one of our priorities was to let the village manager come in, the new village manager come in and help us to restructure a staff and a backbone for the, for the staff that would be in keeping with some of their value add and some of their initiative. So I think we're failing in our initial discussion to try to do that by jumping ahead into this position. I find this conversation awkward in that we're talking about a Director of Operations position and a promotion from intern to director. I think that's really an awkward, big, bold step. I also find this conversation awkward because if we are posting a director position, I think a director position should encompass some amount of external candidates who might be more qualified or more experienced to fill that position. And at least for us to consider those candidates. So I really find this conversation to be a little bit preliminary in a sense because we don't know what the big picture of the village hall looks like. I don't even have a copy of Denise's resume that's been transmitted to me in any way at any time during her entire employment with us. And it's a conversation that we've had multiple times over, over that period of time. So I, I don't know how we support a disposition and making this appointment without doing our due diligence on the backside of, of the structure of what our municipality and our village staff should look like going forward. So those are my general comments. Having said that, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to make it sound like I'm not thrilled to death Denise is hearing the work she's done, and we need to recognize that. Please don't misunderstand that in any shape or form. I, I mean, your capabilities are tremendous. I just don't know if your capabilities are the best choice. I, I shouldn't say that. I don't know if we're, if we're doing justice to all the residents of the village by not doing our diligence on the backside of this. And I don't think we've done that. I mean, if I asked any one of you to show me what the big picture is for our village staff going forward and what their characteristics are and what the strategy should be and what happened to our initiative to have the new village manager come in and help us structure that, I'd be very curious what your answers are. So I, I just think this is really an awkward conversation and open session, and I think we should be having it in, in executive session to talk about what the strategy is going forward and the other positions, including, you know, the planner role. Enough said. Thank you.
Chris, thank you for your comments. Any other comments on this?
Well, I, Chris, I, I appreciate what you just said. Obviously was difficult for you. And, and I, I, I think you, you, you raise valid points. My excitement comes from working with Denise and seeing her capabilities and being, I, I'd hate to lose her. I, I don't disagree with what you're saying. And I, and maybe we, maybe, maybe we do need to discuss it more in, in executive sessions. It has to do with, with employment. For, for the record, I'm, I'm very comfortable with Denise and applaud the help you've given us and the work you've done. You're, you're, you're like a gift.
Right.
Regardless, okay, so.
It keeps on giving.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's a fair comment. I appreciate the comments also, Chris. I do think, I, I don't know about your company. I don't know a single place where, when you have a really high-performing intern who's demonstrated and learned, and we've invested all along, you don't try to find, you know, a suitable promotion into, into employment. That doesn't address all of your concerns, but I, I think that's something I really would like, I would hate to not have Denise on board.
And, and that's why, that's why I, I say this conversation should be executive session fodder. I don't disagree with what you just said. I think we need to try to find a way to keep good people, no question. I just don't know if director is the right title. To me, intern to director is never, you know, never.
Chris, with all due respect, Denise is mid-career. She's gone through a career transformation. She's not only highly accomplished in her core career, which was in the educational arena.
As I mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, I haven't even seen her resume.
Well, Chris, I've never known that you made a request for that. I can get it to you tonight if you want to see her resume.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Okay.
Bobby, you were going to say something?
I, I was going to make a motion to, in support of resolution establishing the position of Director of Operations for the Village of Long Grove and confirming the appointment of Denise Rosenquist effective May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, we have a live motion moved by trustee O'Reilly. Anyone want to second that?
One more question if I could.
Sure.
All right, go ahead. You could, you could seek your second, I guess. What, what salary are we offering?
The salary that I'm recommending is eighty-five thousand dollars, which is on the low end of the salary range.
Okay, last question I have, Bill. We had executive session not more than a few days ago, and we talked about altering the, the benefits package to make sure that we're not duplicating the same mistakes that we made with, with, with previous employees. And we even talked about consideration of migration to a different program outside of vacation to PTO. And I thought we had general consensus from the board at that time that we were going to consider making those changes before adding more staff members. Want to know where we're at with that.
Well, I, I don't think it's an issue that we can change.
Sorry, asking you the question to the, to the other bill.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no. So, so Bill, basically, Bill said that, you know, when we get the new manager in place, that would be one of his first assignments to address the total benefit package that we have, including sick time, et cetera. So that's something that, that will be addressed.
So we're going to put two more staff members on, village manager in this position, repeating the same basic challenges we had with previous, the previous setup.
I think the previous setup was the result of a specific contract that was outside the employee. I mean, any employee handbook, if it's amended, would automatically apply to everybody, right?
Yes.
Sure, I understand that, but then you're, you're, you're changing the terms, and if they're, if they're changed in maybe not a favorable way, employees aren't happy. And it, it's de-motivating, and that's what I was just trying to avoid. I mean, set, set the stage so that the actors know what, what the performance will be that night.
Well, just one element of the, you know, the compensation package that's going to be looked at, and that's the sick days. So that's really the concern that we have. The vacation is being managed properly now. It's how sick days are handled, so.
I'd like to second Bobby's motion.
Okay, seconded by trustee Nora. That's a roll call, so.
Trustee O'Connor.
Can you come back to me?
Sure. Trustee Nora.
Yes.
Uh, trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
Trustee Borowski.
No.
And trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
All right, motion carried.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Denise.
Yep, congratulations, Denise.
Thank you very much.
The next one on the agenda is, we had previously approved a motion to spend about sixteen thousand five hundred, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars to demolish an old hotel that's back in North Long Grove on eighty-three forty-five there. It's a safety issue. But apparently, we didn't have the full proposal, only a partial portion of the proposal was attached to the resolution, so it was only half the amount. We approved the part for the restoration, but not the part for the demolition. It's backed by a court order, so, you know, we've got the approval to do it, plus a lien on the property. A lien on the property will be filed, so we can recover it once the, the property is sold. But we have to modify the resolution that we approved over a year ago for the proper amount. The contractor's on site with his equipment ready to demolish it, but it was felt that we should wait till we all get together as a board to review this. That was a mistake on the previous village manager's behalf, not knowing that there was a second half to the proposal. So that's what we have in front of us. Any comment?
I assume we're not burning it?
That was, that was my suggestion. I, I emailed Bill Balling this afternoon and said, is there any possibility that we can donate this to a fire department so they can burn it down for training purposes?
It's so close. It's so close to the buildings.
But that's what I'm saying, for, for training purposes, and I, I hear you. I don't know that the land is worth thirty-three thousand dollars. I drove over there today. I mean.
Did you check in to the hotel, or?
Uh, no, I tried, but the clerk was not available. But there is, there is a big crane there.
Yeah.
And it is an eyesore, admittedly, but I just wonder if, if there's a possibility of that. I mean, you could kill two birds with one stone, be, you know, helping out rookie trainees and save us some dollars. Ashes, ashes don't cost that much to get rid of.
Mine was a sarcastic question.
Mine was sincere. I mean, people have done that, you know, and I didn't want to bring it up when the chief was on. I suppose it might have been a good idea, but, or an idea. Is there any possibility of that? Have you ever?
You, you, you wouldn't eliminate all of your demolition costs because you have to get rid of the foundation and you have to do the restoration of the site, and that meets the stormwater management ordinances of the, both the village and the county. So there would be some potentially discount in the demolition portion. My guess is that the, the other would be relatively close because you'd have to do some excavation to get rid of the, the underground foundation, some of the utilities. I, I tend to agree with Bobby. It, it, it's, it's not in a prime area for testing, and it's, it's a bigger structure than a home. And I'm not sure that either of the chiefs, and certainly this would be a countryside chief decision, would be eager to, unless they did it as a non-fire event. In other words, they crack walls and they use it for evacuations. That's done as part of the training. But this is one of those persistent eyesores that has a resolution that we, you know, we've been struggling with chasing down property owners for derelict property maintenance on our major highways. This is one that can be on auto drive and our control if we do it. I was surprised the way that it, I mean, it was an accident. It was, it was, it was, it, it was, both the restoration and the demolition had the exactly the same price. The, the quotes were like one digital way in terms of the numbering system. So I can see how an accident mistake could have been made in presenting it, but it was way more than a Scribner's error because it doubles the price of the total project, which is demolition and duration. So I, I would say we could do it. We are going to get, as, as President Jacob said, we are going to get our money back eventually because we, we've got it leaned and the property is gonna perform in some capacity in, in the future. But it is, it is something that's, it's blight abatement, as I see it. That's the number one goal, and get it out of here. As we're trying to get other things out, you know, the, the golf course shed over on fifty-three, that was great to get that out. It's not done yet, but they've got the preparatory stuff. They've already started to clean up the site. These other problem sites that we have that are all in private ownership are going to be a little more challenging and probably have some court issues. But this one, we, we're, we're in the driver's seat and we can put the pedal on all the way, but we obviously, we need the authority to, to, to do for the right amount to get it done, so.
I'll weigh in one item here. You know, looking at Google Maps, and my worry is, and I can show my screen, it's just the proximity to the hotel, the, you know, the other auto complex.
Oh, yeah.
The homeowner's right behind it.
It's right there.
It's, I think it would be a dangerous, my opinion, I wouldn't burn it, but.
I might, I might add that the fire departments may be reluctant to do it. If we don't have title, which we don't, they, I mean, at least in other instances, they want to have some kind of license from a title holder or an easement from a title holder before they undertake that kind of work. And we're not in a position to offer that. We do have the court authority for the demolition, but that's a slightly different technique and different performer than what is typically done with a demolition. I, I haven't had any comments, conversation with the fire departments, but other departments that I've worked with have had those types of requests for, for practice buildings.
Okay, that's fine. It was just a question. You know, it's, it's just ugly as all get out.
Yep, just showing it on the screen. So, I mean, this, this is what would concern me, so.
Right.
Any further discussion? If not, would somebody like to make a motion?
So move.
Okay, move by trustee O'Connor.
Second.
Seconded by trustee O'Reilly. Roll call, please.
Okay, trustee Borowski.
Being glad that we're spending some money in the north side of Long Grove, the answer is yes.
And, and, and such a classy amount of money, you know, it's really productive.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Bobby, you're sarcastic. You're going to have to put like the sarcasm sign up, so when people review the video in the future, they.
I should never, yes, I'll, I'll get a sign.
Trustee Kritzmeyer. No problem. Okay, trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
And trustee Nora.
Aye.
And trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you. I'm going to ask maybe Jim Hoag to help us here a little bit, too. The next one is a, a resolution approving amendments to the building lines for lot number seven in the Steepleview Estates subdivision. So Jim, if you're there, would appreciate your comments on this one.
Uh, no problem, Bill. Thank you. You are correct. The property in question is lot seven of Steepleview Estates. This has been approved as a PUD going back to two thousand and eight. The applicant who's acting on behalf of the purchaser seeks to construct a ranch-style home on the property, and the existing building box won't accommodate the desired footprint. The property totally contains eighteen point one-six acres. I think you all know where it's located, very close to Country Club Estates, the north end of Country Club Estates. John Alrick petitioned the village for the subdivision approval, which was granted, and he currently owns lot seven. Per the approval ordinance in two thousand and eight, modifications to the building box were contemplated to allow some flexibility because they did not know what type of houses would be put on the property. So this can be done without any further public hearing, but it does require the village board to approve a resolution mending the building boxes. Approximately twenty-five percent of the property is occupied by the. Approximately twenty-five percent of the property is occupied by the existing building box. That number is twelve thousand one hundred and ninety square feet. The reconfiguration will be the same, approximately twenty-five percent of the lot, and the same amount of square footage. An easy way to think of it, rather than being short and fat, the new building box would be kind of long and skinny. And the setbacks that they're asking for do not exceed anything that was not granted as part of the PUD. Setback relief was asked for and granted. In my report, you have the, what they referred to as the typical setbacks, which were forty foot on the front yards and thirty on the sides and the rear. That is a deviation from the R-two standards, which is what the underlying zoning is. Existing, the front yards would be the same, and that's measured from the least dimension from the street to the building box. So in this instance, there's a cul-de-sac bulb there, the least dimension is from the cul-de-sac bulb to the building box. As you go north, and the lot straightens out, I guess you could say, that dimension will increase to about, I believe, sixty feet. On the-
Jim, Jim, can you tell me, where is north on this?
North, okay, if you're looking at the concept plan, north will be to your left.
Okay, alright.
And that is a bit confusing, because typically when maps are drawn, north is up.
Yes.
Okay? In this instance, the way they drew it, and I think it, it, um, was easier to draw, that's the only conclusion that I have, north would be to your left. So that, your left is the front yard, and that would be the, the forty-foot least dimension that I just mentioned.
Okay.
There's a side yard that will be to the east, and that will be top of the concept plan, that's thirty feet. It's the same dimension that was approved with the existing building box, there's no change there. On the other end, which is the west side, the building box measures about sixty feet, that would go down to forty foot. Forty foot is the least dimension, the minimum that's required for the R-two district, which again, is the underlying zoning district. The rear yard actually improves, and that would be to the south. Existing, that measures about fifty-two feet, that would jump up to about sixty-four and a half feet. So, again, rather than being short and fat, the building box would now become long and skinny. This request has been looked at by the health department with regard to septic suitable soils. The health department has indicated the relocation of the septic, which would be required. It's proposed on the, or it's identified on the west side now, per the PUD approval. It would now move to the other side, which is the east side of the lot. The health department is okay with that. The arborist has looked at the property, some trees will be impacted by the reconfiguration. Tree protection ordinance will be in place. Both those are protected species, they will need to be replaced per the tree preservation ordinance that we have on hand. The village engineer has looked at it, he notes that there will be additional data to ensure compliance with the stormwater management ordinance, which again, is the standard that's been adopted, that they will have to live up to. But he, he notes it appears that it can be done, so we will need more data on that, but stormwater management ordinance isn't a negotiable kind of thing. They have to apply with it, uh, comply with it, just like any other house that we typically review. If the building box was not changed, the house would have to comply with the stormwater management ordinance. AC review is required, that was part of the approval in two thousand and eight. So any elevations that are formally proposed will have to go to the architectural commission for review. That does not change as none of the other parts of the approval ordinance will change either. They all stay intact, it's just the relocation of the building box that is being requested. The applicant is present, so if you have questions for him, you could ask him, or I will try to answer any questions you may have at this point.
I have a question, Jim. Go ahead, Ann.
Nope, go ahead.
When you mentioned the stormwater management, is that the old one or the new one?
They would be in the, the new rainfall data.
So it, it complies with the, 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 yes, the new one that we talked about?
No, it would not, because the plat was recorded prior to that adoption, so they are, I will call it grandfathered, under the old regulations.
But does it comply with the new ones? In other words, i- i- if it wasn't grandfathered, is this in keeping with what the new regs are?
That I don't know. I can tell you that when it was approved, it was approved with the, the old data, so. I don't know that there was any extra capacity that was built into the stormwater detention that would make up the difference between the new data and the old.
Hey, hey, Jim, I don't even think there's a detention pond here, right? Just the way it's up on the hill. Am I wrong?
No, I believe there is detention, and I believe that was incorporated into the open space, which is part of outlot A.
Okay, so it's, it's in the outlot, one of the outlots, okay, got it.
Correct.
There's only eight lots, it's, it's a beautiful piece of property, so.
Yeah, actually, there's nine, two have houses on them, and the other seven are vacant, well, I'm sorry. There's nine, two have houses on them, two have been built upon, and the others are vacant.
So it's total of nine, they're not eight, okay, got it.
Is lot six been built on?
Yes, it has.
Yeah, I was there, there's a house here, yeah.
So, so are they aware that they-
At the end of the cul-de-sac, and I don't know the numbers right off the top of my head, one is six, I think the other one might be five, I'm not sure. But the two at the end of the cul-de-sac that are above the country club parking lot are the two that have been built on.
Okay, so, so lot six is aware that they would be twenty feet closer to this proposed construction?
No, we, we, the, we have not sent out any notice or, or anything like that. They would be having the opportunity to, to comment at the architectural commission meeting. That would be a public meeting where the elevations would be reviewed, but no, there has been no formal notification of the change in the building box.
Because they're within the R-two guidelines anyway.
Well, it's the PUD approval that allows this to be done by resolution of the village board without any further public hearing or modification to the approval ordinance.
Understand, but the idea is, it's getting skinnier on the lot six to seven border, which is really getting, it had buffer and now it goes down to the minimum of forty.
Correct, which, if there was no PUD, would be the setback that they would be building to anyway.
Right, that was my point. I, I thought your write-up was very, was, was very good and clear, I appreciate it, Jim.
Thank you.
I did go back there and drive today.
Oh, good.
I did the Google access, Mount Long Grove over here.
There you go.
You know, this is the country club over here, and then these are the two homes and the house, this is the lot, right?
Yeah.
It's beauti-, I mean, it's a beautiful property here, just the way it sits up on a little bit of a hill, so it's really neat.
Yes. That was actually, um-
Norma Sales.
Norma Sales, thank you, Bobby, thank you, I, I almost had it, but yes, that was Norma Sales property, you're correct.
I don't know if that helps or not, just to give you a visual for where it is and everything, so.
I have no concerns about it, because it seems like the, the only thing that's changed, they're not asking for a deviation from anything else that weren't already granted to the PUD, or that they wouldn't have to do no, no matter what, it's just that, as Jim said, from short and squat to long and skinny.
Correct.
Yeah, but they'd be twenty feet closer to the, to the other house.
Yeah.
I know, but again, it's-
Which is what the side yards are all about.
Yeah, I mean, that would be courteous, but it's still within, they're, they're not asking for a deviation from anything that we haven't, I mean, from the zoning that's there already, which is the point.
No deviation from the R-two or what was granted as part of the PUD approval, that's correct.
Jeff, do you, do you know if this complies with the, the new stormwater regs? It's hard to impervious surface.
Well, as Jim mentioned, I'm gonna need some more data on this, some actual calculations as far as what their area is. I did take a look at the stormwater report that was approved back in two thousand and eight. They're approved up to a, almost a twenty-six percent impervious surface under the old rainfall data, so I don't have enough information at this point to really accurately answer that question.
Any further discussion? Does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Sure.
Go ahead, Chris.
I thought I just did. I moved to approve resolution, approving amendments to the building lines for lot seven in Steepleview Estates subdivision.
Anybody want to second it? Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Okay, second by trustee Nora, that's a roll call.
Okay, uh, let's see. Um, trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Nora.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
And trustee Borowski.
Aye.
All right, motion carried, congratulations, thank you. Looking forward to seeing that house built.
Thank you, guys.
Let's see, the next item is, is, I think trustee O'Reilly's going to lead its presentation, consideration of program of protective measures against the unauthorized vehicle damage to the Long Grove Historic Bridge.
Okay, um, we, we, I started on this several months ago. I, I acquired a, a study from Georgia that looked at, I don't know, a gazillion bridge problems, and I, I handed this out to a whole lot of people, and nobody bit until Scott Hoynes did. And Scott is, as many of you will know, is a Long Grove resident. Used to, were you the attorney for the Park District? Or, or, or did you just play the attorney?
Scott, you're muted, by the way, too.
Scott? He, 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 he was having difficulty on his computer, he's now-
He was the attorney. Now, correct.
There you are.
All right, there you are.
All right. Now, I was on the Park District as a commissioner for twenty years, a president for at least one, and yeah, I've been a, I've been a resident a long time.
A long-term resident. And, and so he contacted a variety of people, and I'm gonna throw it to him to tell us what he did and, and what he found, and what we're proposing.
So what I did is I followed up on Bobby's research, and my first goal was to find the, well, the, the, the industry standard, if you will, for overheight detection systems, and these are, of course, systems that will detect a, a vehicle which is over the prescribed height of the, of the bridge. It was pretty easy to identify the industry leader, and that would be Trig Industries International, LLC. It's an outfit that is located in Newport News, Virginia. They have been in business for, well, since nineteen sixty-five. The company has more operating overheight detection systems in the world than any other manufacturer. They, they use a technology, well, the technology constantly changes, but the technology now in use is a patented technology, it's an infrared LED. And basically what it is, is it's a, an infrared beam transmitted from one unit across the street to the other unit. And if a vehicle is overheight, the system will activate, and standard for these systems is an audible and a visual. The audible can be adjusted, making it as loud as you want, or as soft as you want. The visual is a sign, a flashing sign of some sort, the visual can be virtually whatever you want. And we, we're giving some examples of those visuals, I think you probably have them in your package there. One item that you should know about the visuals, typically, these visuals, I shouldn't say typically, quite often the visuals have a visor around them, primarily to protect the visual from the sun, so that when a driver hears the audible, sees the visual, he can actually read the visible. And, and the visible might say something like, "Overheight, turn right," that sort of thing, it can be whatever we want it to be, really. I found, I've talked to Trig Industries on numerous occasions, that my contact there is a guy named Sam Slade, he's the systems engineer, very accessible, and certainly would be accessible to anyone on the board who wanted to talk to him. My next job was, I wanted to figure out how to mount these systems, and one of the questions I had was whether we could use the existing lampposts from the, the new lighting on Coffin Road as, as posts. So I went about the process of determining, first of all, who manufactured these posts, and it's an outfit called Philips Lumeck, out of Canada. They're hard to reach because they just speak French, but I got their local representative, who was quite helpful. We eventually determined about a week ago that the existing posts, which would be on the east side of the bridge, although they'd be ideal, in my opinion, Philips does not want to approve mounting these units on those posts. So that we would have to get two new posts on the east side of the bridge, two new posts on the west side of the bridge, a total of four. I don't think that's it, I don't have any prices on those, I don't think it's a terribly expensive proposition to get four posts, and I say that simply because these are cast aluminum, and if you're familiar with cast aluminum, it's, it's a sturdy, you know, material, but they're not terribly expensive. I've got a couple on my property, I think I paid a hundred dollars a piece for them at the Marners. I'm sure that the units that we'd be purchasing would be more expensive than that, but I think they'd be quite reasonable. Finally, I wanted to find someone who could do the installation, because Trig does not do installations. Anybody who buys their product is on their own, and is, you've got to find a local contractor. So the contractor that is most responsive was one that you may be familiar with, it's Hometown Electric. Hometown was the sub on the McHenry Road lighting project, they were the sub of a lamp. They were quite responsive, they got back to us, back to me quite quickly, and actually Bobby and I spent a, you know, a few minutes, half an hour, whatever, out there going over the project with a representative from Hometown. In terms of pricing, I was frankly kind of surprised that the pricing appeared to be, to me, quite reasonable. The individual units or systems, and we would need two, the systems cost about seventy-five hundred dollars a piece. Now that includes the LED laser, that includes as well a sign, or the signage. The signage would be subbed out by Trig and would be prepared according to our specifications. And consequently, the signage might be a little bit more, a little bit less. As far as the labor is concerned, now this was based upon an assumption that we would be using existing electric on the east side of the bridge. We knew we'd have to bring in electric on the west side of the bridge, because there are no lights on that side. But the estimate, and it was a guessed estimate, if you will, from Hometown, their estimator, said, "We're probably looking at between ten and fifteen thousand dollars." We asked, "Can you give us a firm bid?" His, his response was, he said, "We can certainly give you a firm bid." He said, "But frankly, my suggestion would be that you do this on a time and materials," he said, "I don't think it's terribly complicated." Bottom line is, when we add it all together, I think we're talking around, I'd say, between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars. Now, in terms of the appearance, the posts that would be used can be whatever, they probably match the colors that we've got already on Coffin Road and McHenry Road, that's not an issue. As far as the actual laser units, those can be painted any color we want, and the manufacturer's happy to do that. The electric would have to be done, it would be done by Hometown, obviously. I did have some discussions with Trig about the efficacy of the product, you know, how many false positives do you get, how many false alarms do you get? Is that a problem? Has it been a problem? And the answer is no, it's not a problem. He said, "The, this system is one that is built to withstand-" He said, the this system is one that is built to withstand hailstorms, high winds, heavy rains. The beam is so powerful that it will not be affected by weather. You know, could a large object set it off? Sure, maybe. If you got a goose that flew through there, maybe, but not likely because of the timing of these things. The next question, of course, in my mind was, what about, you know, what about false alarms? How do we avoid false alarms? Because certainly nobody wants a false alarm. And that, the answer was, it made perfect sense. Typically, what is industry standard, according to Sam? He said, we allow for a margin of safety of approximately two inches. Sometimes we go three to six inches. And what does that mean? Well, it means that the beam is going to be shot, you know, if we want to limit the trucks, and of course, no trucks are supposed to be on that road. We want to limit the vehicles and make sure that only vehicles of a certain height or greater set off the system. Well, then what we do is we set that beam so that it's a couple of inches, say, or three inches above what is our concern. And as a result, he said, you just don't get false alarms. It's not a problem. Now, one thing I think to kind of keep in mind, and I think you, most of you know this already. The the bridge, and I pasted off today just to get an idea, the bridges of the uniform height, I should say, the canopies at uniform height for about 12 feet across the center of the bridge. And I would say the, according to the engineer's report that I saw, that steel plate, or the steel plates, I should say, which are on either side of the entrance and are about 12 feet in length. Those plates are nine feet, 10 inches above the road bed. The current eight-foot-six-inch limitation, height limitation, was, I believe, based upon a concern about the corners of the bridge entrances, which, as you may recall, are curved. So my understanding, but we want to confirm it, of course, my understanding is that that eight-foot-six-inch height limitation is based upon a, you know, a concern that we allow for some error. My guess is, just a guess at this point, but my guess is that we would have absolutely no trouble at all installing a system with a safety margin of six inches, perhaps, three to six at least, maybe even more than that. And when you consider the fact that the vehicles entering that bridge from either side are supposed to be on the running tracks. And I guess you could say only an idiot would be anywhere other than the running tracks. Though, since the the highest point on the canopy is nine feet, 10 inches, I think we've got plenty of room to to play with there to make sure that the system is safe and not subject to, you know, false alarms. I questioned him. I said, you know, over the 55 years or whatever you've been in business, how many of these false alarms do you get? He said, we hardly get any. He said, it just doesn't happen. He said, the technology has gotten that good. And as far as, you know, monitoring the system, the same thing. In the old days, they used to have incandescents in there. You had to constantly monitor what was going on. No problem anymore. One thing I might add, too, Bobby and I visited a, an operating system in Deerfield. It's, some of you may be familiar with it. It's on Deerfield Road, just east of, I'm sorry, just west of the downtown area. It's where the railroad tracks across Deerfield Road. They have a system that is in many respects more elaborate than what we're talking about. They have had some false positives, and that's because their system is older technology. The weather affects their system. It would not affect the system that we'd be talking about here. The beams are so strong, as Sam explained to me, that these things are now, can literally stretch across ten-lane highways and be totally unaffected by, you know, birds, hails, storms, hurricanes, whatever. It's just not an issue anymore. So that's, that's pretty much it. I think I covered the bases here, but I'm sure you're going to have a few questions.
One thing, Scott, is about Boston.
I'm sorry?
Boston.
Oh, yes, yes. I'll give you an example of how, you know, the Trig Industries, not only is, you know, got facilities in 48 states, they have over 200 installations, I'm sorry, installations in over 200 countries overseas. To give you an example of the sophistication of the, of this company and the work it does, Trig was provided all of the overheight installations, 50 of them actually, for the big dig in Boston. Somebody may recall, that's the ridiculously expensive underground highway that some knucklehead decided was a good idea for Boston City proper. But bottom line is, they're, the literature that I reviewed all pointed to Trig as the, you know, the standard, the industry standard. Of course, they advertise themselves as the industry standard, but I think that that, such advertising is justified.
Bill, could you put up that that visual that I I gave you?
There you go.
Okay, so you can see where where the bridge is and where the sensors preliminarily would be and where the warnings would be so that, whether coming from the east or from the west, it would give them opportunity to turn off before the bridge.
And I might add.
You mean that's the signage, Bobby?
Pardon me?
That the warnings are the signage saying turn?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Bobby, I might add, the location of the sensors is really the subject of the village's determination. I mean.
Right.
Sam simply selected those four sites because, you know.
It was a very preliminary look, but he was very impressed with the bridge. He loved the bridge.
Yeah. But yeah, we can put those anywhere. And I think that's something we would want to talk about. And I think the board would want to talk about, you know, where is the best place to locate these things? I mean, there's some aesthetics involved, certainly on the east side of the bridge, you know, how many, we're going to have to have two poles on there. Where do you want to put them so they don't look awkward? On the west side of the bridge, I don't think it's, to me, it doesn't strike me as a big deal. The good news is that, as you all know, if you're approaching, if you're going eastbound, there's a Schaefer Road is the obvious right-hand turn. If you, if you're a truck driver and you suddenly are alerted to the fact that you're overheight. And coming westbound from downtown, you have a, you've got an easy left-hand turn into the parking lot. So it's ideal, I think, for this sort of overheight detection system.
So, any questions?
You know, there was, there was one, I'll just hit it right away. Is there, is there a horn involved here?
I'm sorry, a horn?
A horn? No.
Well, it was in the proposal. And the reason I bring it up is we got feedback from some of the neighboring residents that they were concerned about the noise, right?
Yeah, here's, and I can respond to that, Bill. Yes, the proposal did have a horn, and quite frankly, I would recommend it. At least, that's in my opinion. And the reason being is that, let's face it, if a vehicle, a truck, which is not supposed to be on the road anyway, gets past all the warning signage from, say, you know, Route 53 until he gets to that detector. I think a, I think a horn makes perfect sense. The horn can be adjusted so that it's, it's not offensive. But I think one way to put it in perspective is the, number one, we're not going to have many, hopefully, trucks on that road. Number two, if an overheight truck does get on that road and does set off the alarm, I think that the noise caused by the audible, the horn, is going to be much preferable than the noise caused by the collision of the truck with the bridge. And, you know, taking it a step further, not only do we want to make sure this, you know, those rare occasions when a truck, truck driver screws up, but thinking a bit further down the road, if that, if a truck does collide with the bridge and does so because we did not provide an audible, there's going to be further disruption to the community, to the downtown, to the neighbors by reason of the, you know, the squad cars that show up, the tow trucks that show up to pull the truck out of there, the repair crew that's got to show up on site to do the repairs. I think the, in my opinion, the the risk, shall we say, or the certainty, rather, that that horn will deploy and warn the driver is going to be much less disruptive than the problems caused by a collision.
The other thing I do want to bring up is, Scott, is that there are garbage trucks come down the street here. So every time the garbage truck would go, and then the other way, we do have trucks that sometimes go this way to get into the Stumble parking lot. So that's the, that's a concern right there, right, with the noise. So there's somebody raising their hand. Do you mind if I let them comment really quick?
Oh, no, no.
If you could introduce yourself.
Yeah, I am Kim. I live at 1103 Schaefer Road, right by the bridge. You probably know me as Ben's wife. But I never really come here. And I've been waiting like three hours to talk about this because we all strongly oppose the horn on this side of the bridge. All of our neighbors who, they're fine with me speaking for them, none of us want the horn. And many comments, one, if it's going to be loud enough for a driver to hear it through whatever's going on in their cab with their music and the windows up, it's going to be loud enough for it to annoy us. Two, every other truck, the, all the other trucks that are allowed to come through here and go down our street to us and our neighbors' houses is going to set off the alarm. Three, there are going to be false positives. There are always false positives. And if anything sensitive enough to catch every truck that goes through, it's also going to check, it's also going to check anything else that's going to be like a false positive.
Yeah, hey, guys, this is Ben. I'm here as well.
But we strongly oppose it. Like, it's, the signs we're okay with. We understand that, and we would probably like to have some say on where they're put. But as long as they have, like, screening, that's fine with. The other things that you talk about, they're not by houses that are literally right next to their horns.
Yeah, I think it's been kind of just grossly underestimated as well with regards to the amount of traffic that we're getting and the comments made by the, the, for here on the call, as he's represented himself as being. I think that, you know, it's unfortunate that we don't have more information about the application of this actual implementation for this use. And we don't have more research and we don't have more studies of this actual bridge problem. I think there's a lot of generalization with the decision to add both the signs and the horns, to be honest. And as the people that live with this bridge, we are the closest to it. Yes, we deal with the sirens when they come and so on and so forth, and we deal with the control cars and the patrol cars and stuff. But the bottom line is that, you know, the horn is going to be a nuisance, period. And we get trucks every single day that will set it off and that will turn onto Schaefer Road. And there's no way around that. I remember, I was on the committee, for those who were in the meeting, who made early recommendations to the board with, you know, the historical site and others, with recommendations of what to do with this bridge. And I think the the common theme here is that we continue to believe that we have to stop the trucks before they reach this truck. And so, you know, breakaway bars, height bars and so on, I think, are going to ultimately be where we end up, whether or not the board approves this measure tonight. But we would ask on Schaefer that if the measure is approved, that you approve it without the audible and see how that goes first. And then move forward. Because I'm kind of a believer that even with the signs and the audible, having spoken to the last driver personally who hit the bridge, you know, and when I literally ran outside and told him to stop and then told him to stop after he had already hit the bridge, he could not hear me inside of his cab. So, you know, I just don't think that this measure is going to work. But we're not even opposed to the signage. We're just opposed to the audible for now. And we would ask that the village and the board, you know, can, you know, consider that. And and the only other point I'll make, because I know our three minutes is up, is that we highly, highly, highly wish that you would spend the dollars on a traffic study with a qualified traffic engineer with specifics to this particular bridge and this particular problem to discover the efficacy of these solutions. We think that that is actually the most important thing that the that the board could do. And that's for the future. That's not for even now. That's for fixing the problem for now and the future.
And thanks for your comments. I'm going to turn it back over to the board. I know that tonight was just the first chance we've had to see this.
Yeah, please clarify. We're not voting on anything.
Yeah, so we're not, nothing's happened tonight.
I just wanted to make sure you guys knew we were all opposed.
Yep, no, we appreciate you joining. We got the, we got the memo. Thank you. And.
Bill, I have, this is Scott again. I have a question here. It was something that you raised, I think, maybe the the people on the other side were raising. Are you saying that the garbage trucks go down, you know, eastbound on Coffin Road and then take a right onto Schaefer routinely?
To serve those houses, yeah.
Routinely, we have.
And not even garbage trucks, like any other trucks.
We have five to 10 trucks per day that will be over the height limit within the laser technology that will trigger the alarm function that will pass the so-called, you know, sensors and continue forward and make a right onto Schaefer.
Aside from the garbage trucks, which, and maybe that's an issue can be addressed, those are going to be overheight, obviously. But the, no other trucks, as I understand, are supposed to be on that road.
But they, they have to be to get to our houses because Schaefer is a one-way street.
Yeah, I think that this is just a demonstration of the fact that the board and the expert on the call and and trustee O'Reilly, with all due respect, I think there needs to be more research done on this stuff because there are tens of trucks a week. I mean, I can share the emails that I send to Bill. I mean, he knows, I know, every week we have them. And they are overheight.
Again, Ben, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. And, you know, we'll, let's turn it back to the board to have a discussion. So, thank you.
Can I share my screen?
Yes, you may.
Okay, first off, I'd like to thank Bobby and Mr. Hoynes. Great job, great investigation. But I think what I'm about to show everybody is worth everyone taking into consideration. You need to give me hosting capability.
Oh, do I need to do that? Okay. Let's see, Chuck. Allow to. Let's see, hold on a second. I'll make you a co-host. I think that'll work.
I won't abuse my position.
Go for it. Do you see the little arrow on the bottom?
Yep.
Yep.
Do you see a sign that says 11foot8.com?
Yep. Are you going to show the video?
I, I'm not going to have the noise on it or the volume. But note the overheight turn, must turn, must turn, right? Now, I don't know where that got picked up from because none of these cars are overheight at this point. But Mr. Mover didn't care. And there's hundreds of these videos on this 11foot8.com that basically show the same thing. I think it's a great option to consider. But are we spending $30,000 for people to ignore it and still hit the bridge? That's my only concern. So I won't bore everybody with.
I, I, I'm, I hear what you're saying. And and I think that, you know, we're laymen. You know, Scott's an attorney. I don't know what I am. And 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 so I know I'm not an engineer. And and so I would hope that that Jeff would take a look at this and 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 check out Trig and their efficacy of of their product. The, the, the study that I sent you all from, from Georgia has tons of examples. Ooh. Ooh. Ooh.
Okay, Chuck, you can stop showing that, okay? Okay Chuck, you can stop showing that. Okay.
Yeah.
It goes out for hours.
It's painful. And, and so this is, this is just a foundation of information at this point.
Yeah, no, I, and I, I don't disagree with anything you're, you're saying, Bobby. Clearly I've been involved with this issue as well. And if I could figure out how to turn off my screen share.
Watching that all night. Great.
Should be up at the top Chuck. Stop sharing screen, little red thing.
That's what I thought.
And can I just say one more thing, Bill? And then I'll be quiet.
Yes, go ahead.
Did that do it?
I think
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Ben.
Oh, no, it's fine. To Chuck's point, as well as to trustee O'Reilly's point, you know, that's the issue exactly. And that is that we know the technology will work. Like, we're not debating the efficacy of the, of Trig. Like, I'm sure it's great. And that's just the problem because this bridge has unique issues with the distances of the traveling of the trucks, specifically on our side to my wife's points with regards to the oversized trucks, UPS, FedEx, garbage, all those false alarms. So I think if an engineer was looking at it in addition to all of us, because we're all laymen, in my opinion, like, they would be able to figure out maybe a solution that works. Maybe it's two different solutions on each side because of the way the travel, the, the actual traffic travels. So just to be clear, that's kind of where the point we were making is that we know the technology.
Where are we going with this photo?
I'm trying to
We got a cow now.
It's just a picture. Go back to the trucks.
I'm sorry.
Can you turn that off for me, Bill? I'm having
That cow will stop a truck. So you put it on the bridge.
I think Ben was, I think Ben was in the middle of a sentence.
Yeah, no, I just, you know, again, I, I'm, I'm good. I mean, I just, like, we know that the technology works. That's the issue. The issue is that it's this application. It's this bridge. It's a traffic study, a minimal traffic study that shows the types of trucks that are traveling and the traffic. So that the technology then meets the requirements of this particular implementation in this site. You know, that's, that's our big issue, other than the fact that we know, I know, because I sit out on my porch and I work from home all day, that that horn's going to be going like five, 10 times a day without a doubt. I mean, today alone, we had six. All of them turned, you know? So, and they were all over or right at. So that's it. I appreciate everyone's time and consideration. And I know this is a foundation. And I think it's great work so far, but I think the laser technology for the application on this side needs just more time and more research.
Yeah, Ben, Ben, again, this was a concept that's being presented to us for the first time. It's kind of unveiled. We're kind of thinking about it here. So I appreciate you and your wife joining us and sharing your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I still think we've got a, pardon the expression, stupid problem more than we have technology problem. That, that's my only point. And Bill, can you please try to get my screen off? I use Zoom all the time and I'm not getting the stop sharing button.
This should be at the very top of the screen. There's like a, just very top, right above where the
Yeah, I don't disagree. Can't tell you what's going on.
Or try to see if you're on full screen. See if you can get out of, at full screen.
I've been trying everything.
All right.
It's embarrassing, but it was worth it because I wanted you guys to see the video.
Maybe log out and log in.
I just
Yeah, I think I'm going to do that.
I'm really, I mean, you know, we're not taking any action here. It's just, we have spent so much on this bridge. And to Chuck's point, we have so much, it's, it's clearly a stupid problem. I, I, you know, I don't, I don't know what to do. This is a it seems very expensive. That doesn't make it bad necessarily, but it sort of like, you know, really want to have belt and suspenders to spend that much money again. But I don't, I don't have any other alternatives, so.
Well, well, two points of view I have is, is one is it's interesting to talk to some of the owners in, in downtown and they don't want it fixed. They love the crashes. It's good for business.
All for goodness sake.
But, but on the other hand, we look like, and we're an embarrassment that we can't stop this. I mean, we are, we look like, well, you know what we look like. It's an embarrassment that we, that we don't address this in some manner, which is why I got involved in it in the first place, because nobody was doing nothing to, to, to work on it.
We modified the openings.
Well, and people assume that we're not doing, paying attention. But I think that, you know, so there's a whole lot of ruminating. I'm sorry, Chuck.
No, all I was saying is we have made adjustments to that bridge.
We, we have. Yes, you, you and I were on that.
We put, you know, some steel edges in to help protect the bridge further. And yeah, we, you know, just go to next door if you want to see all the fun things people were saying about this board. I chose to stop reading it after about the first three comments because I was getting really aggravated.
We are not obtrusive.
No, but you know, these are people who, most of them don't even live in Long Grove and you know, it, it's fodder. I don't know if we're going to ever get away with that or away from.
This is a beginning to think about what we can do. We've got what, a $900,000 investment? Which I believe we should protect. And, and, and so that, that's how this got started. So I, I, I'd like Jeff to, to, to take a look at what we've provided. And, and, and obviously we need to address certain issues with it and, and, and see where we go.
My take
Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to jump in, just offer a couple of comments if I may. Bobby sent this over to me and thank you for all the research that you did and Mr. Hoin that he put together in his presentation there. This is a lot similar to what Traffic Control Corporation presented to us, you know, a few months ago. However, their price tag was significantly higher and, you know, I don't
Who are they? I, I'm not aware of this.
Traffic Control Corporation, we initially contacted them for an over height detection system. And they gave us a proposal for much the same as what Trig had here. But their price tag was $65,000 just for the equipment. No installation and that was a huge investment for something that, you know, nobody can guarantee is going to stop the trucks from hitting the bridge or over height vehicles. So that's where it was, you know, back to the drawing board and Trig Industries has a product that's you know, from what I've seen of this and looked into it is the same. It's got the, the over height sensor, the beam brakes. It flashes a sign. It's got the horn. The only thing that Traffic Control Corporation had that Trig Industries and the proposal in the board packet doesn't have is, you know, license plate recognition cameras. But that's not, that's not the, the goal. The goal is to alert drivers to modify their behavior and turn before they hit the bridge. So this, this system is very similar to that. And this is exactly what Traffic Control Corporation, you know, the county uses them. And Traffic Control Corporation is also the same contractor that Deerfield used for their system.
I thought that, that we were told that the company that did Deerfield is out of business. Maybe it's the equipment.
It might be the equipment. Yeah. Since the technology changes and things like that, exactly.
Their, their whole deal was far more complicated because it was tied in with street lights and red lights and and, and 150 grand.
Yep, yep. And they, and I talked to Bob Phillips, who's the village engineer for Deerfield, and they had a lot of issues with that. Not only the false positives, but every time the the beam would break, it went through the, triggered the camera or the traffic signals to cycle. And it, it was a traffic mess as well.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll look into this a little bit more, but you know, this is on par with, you know, the initial thoughts that we had as far as, hey, what could be put in place? What can alert these guys that are driving these vehicles that are over height, that they are over height? You would think that a commercial vehicle driver would know, but we've seen both commercial vehicles and rental trucks hit the bridge. So everybody needs a little bit of help, if you will. So I'll take a look at that. The one thing I did want to throw out there, I just looked it up. Scott, you mentioned that the poles were not included when Robert Parker Coffin Road was getting off, off its infancy stages for construction. We did look at the pole costs and the decorative poles that we had. And obviously they're going to be different because these are going to be prices for light poles, not just the standard pole, but they were about $2,000 apiece just for the pole itself. That didn't include the foundation and the installation, but I just wanted to throw that out there for the because I took the time to look it up, quite frankly, and just throw that into the conversation.
You know, I, I want the board to understand, I'm not against doing this, but I think we should really understand why. Are we doing this because we think it's going to modify behavior? Or are we doing this to show the general public that we're actually doing something to try to stop it?
Well, no, no decisions being made tonight, Chuck.
Oh, I know. I've been
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a tough call because I get back to you can't fight stupid.
Yep. And I don't know I don't know if anyone else wants to comment. We still got a few more things to do tonight. So I will open it up to that. I will, I will just want to make sure I say one thing. I, I want to thank Scott and Bobby for their work here, right? They come up, they came up with a very cost-effective solution. Whether, you know, it's implemented without a horn or with a horn, obviously there's concerns with the horn, but it could be implemented pretty cost-effectively. And so far, no one's come up with anything like this. So it's, thank you for that. And
Yes, thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I'll, I'll open it up to you.
Yeah. Before I let you go, I'd like to say one thing, and that is obviously thanks for the opportunity, but if you would like, I'm more than happy to get back to Trig about some of the issues that were raised this evening. And just to get a little bit of feedback, they may have some solutions. I don't know. I'm happy to do it.
Well, thank you, Scott, for, for all of the work that you did. And, and I would see that, that you've acquired so much knowledge in this that talking with Jeff would also be beneficial for both of you and in talking with Trig. And see, and, and I mean, the, 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 the big item that came up here is how do we adjust for trucks that have to be there?
Right. And the one-way street. Schaefer's one-way. And whether those trucks are supposed, and obviously except for the garbage truck, those other trucks aren't supposed to be on the street. They're obviously ignoring the, the warning signs. So, so I'm, I'm going to let you go. You've got other, other things to do. I'm happy to do Bobby and the rest of the board, whatever you'd like me to do. I'm happy to do some follow-up. Let me, let me know.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you so much, Ben.
No, I was just going to thank Scott. I know he served on the, on the park board when I was on the park board and very active in the community and just wanted to say, say thank you to him and appreciate what he's done. And just hope everything's going well for him.
If it's going well, I'm retired. How could it go any
So you look healthy. That's, that's good too.
One last thing, you know, you know who painted the, you know, Bridge to the Past, don't you? It's my father. Do you ever see that, the painting?
Yeah.
You know, Scott, I was going to mention that. For those who may not know who his father is. He, he, for, for us, he painted the, the Long Grove Bridge. The one with the, the orange fall colors, that was his father. But what he's really known for are his tall ships. I mean, absolutely magnificent paintings. And you could see one over Scott's shoulder.
There you go.
And, and his father was a Long Grove resident, as was his mother.
And I, you know, I think my father was on the, was a trustee when they approved the construction of the canopy over the bridge. I could be wrong about that, but so we, we, maybe we have him to blame for this whole problem. It's a thought. I'm not going to look into that though. So, well, listen, I'll let, let you guys go. Thanks again. And let me know if I can do anything further. I'll wait for your phone calls.
Thanks for joining tonight. Appreciate it.
You bet. Take care.
If, if you don't mind, I'm going to keep us moving. I don't think we have a treasures report, do we?
It did not arrive, Mr. President, so.
It will get distributed as soon as it's received.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, maybe we can, we want to do the trustee reports, but maybe we can let the village engineer go. We don't need for executive session, we don't need Vic or Jeff in the executive session, correct, tonight? So if not, maybe we can move to let Jeff do his report and then he can exit stage left. And then we'll go back to the trustee reports. Is everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Jeff, take it away.
All right. So my report is in the board packet. I'd like to highlight and talk about a couple of items. The first being the North Creever Road reconstruction project. Peter Baker will be the contractor for that, as I previously reported based on their success bid last month. And we had the pre-construction meeting with IDOT last Tuesday and went through a lot of the procedural things that Peter Baker and I need to do as far as paperwork goes, but importantly that I would bring to the board is the proposed construction schedule from Peter Baker. They would like to install their traffic control signs the week of May 11th and start construction on May 17th. Comments on that first? Talking amongst my office, this is the quickest that we've ever seen IDOT react to a federally funded project. So that, that's, that's good. The bad news of that is we were planning and we will have a pre-construction meeting for, with the residents next Wednesday night at the school. So there's not a lot of time between that meeting and when construction starts. But I believe that between the meeting that we had last fall and already the conversations that our resident engineers had with the Prairie Trails of Long Grove that, that we can be successful in this project. The other comment that I just wanted, yeah.
Yes. Are you going to have that, that mobile sign up?
The, like the electronic message board?
Yes.
Yeah, that's part of the, the project.
Okay, okay. Because it really, it's the, it's the traffic going through there that's going to be awful.
Right. Yep. And that was the other comment that I just wanted to highlight as part of the state spec. They are required to put their traffic control up and in place. And this is Peter Baker to install that a week before they actually start the work. So, you know, motorists become at least familiar that there's signs on there. I would like to say acclimated, but a week might is hopefully enough time. So that, that's the schedule. We're looking to get more information every day from Peter Baker. I am happy to report that with the May 17th construction start, they're planning to have construction complete by the end of July. So two and a half months. So that, that'll be good. It'll be, it'll be disruptive, but for a short time. And we are also getting the project website put together so we can get that launched. Hopefully I can have that in the well, it will certainly be in the next engineer's report and I'll be able to share that website at next week's pre-construction meeting with the residents. Moving on in my report, what's that? Oh, sorry.
One quick question on the project and it's
One quick question on the project, and it's just making me think about other projects we've had in the past. Is there a particular place where things will be staged? And I don't care where it is. I just care that we know that where it is, uh, and that that gets communicated. We've run into problems where somebody thought of the village gave permission to be on somebody else's not village land. That's my only point.
Okay. Uh, yeah, that is certainly a, a lesson learned from prior projects. Uh, each, each week there's a, uh, weekly communication that we sent out, uh, for the Robert Parker Coffin Project, which was the last big project. We sent that to the village manager, a copy to the village president. For this project, we'd planned to send that to the village manager, uh, copy to the village president, and then copy also to, uh, Sherry Schlagman, uh, just to make sure that, uh, it's being distributed to, uh, you know, a good number of people. So we can always add to that list. Um.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you got to the point though. I think it's, is there a staging area?
Oh, okay. I heard, I, I, I missed that.
Yeah. So the question was, so we don't inadvertently have them storing equipment on, let's say, the HOA.
Fields.
Or, yeah, the fields across the street or vice versa. Um, are we covering that so that nothing accidentally happens?
Okay. So, yeah, uh, we've specifically told Peter Baker that, uh, staging is very limited for this project, uh, as limited, meaning in the right of way. And that, uh, should work out and Peter Baker doesn't have any concerns with that. Uh, the reason being that this is a lot like, uh, a, a road program, program project. Like maybe Cuba Road is a good example where a lot of the construction operations is, is, has to do with the road itself. There's a little bit of storm sewer out there, but there's not a lot. And it was that piping material that, uh, was, uh, stored off-site as far as the Robert Parker Coffin Road project. You know, that's the type of stuff that we got to find, uh, homes for, uh, for the contractor, but, uh, not a concern on this project. But, uh, if that request ever does come up, obviously it's going to be thoroughly vetted and, uh, by the village before, um, we move forward with something like that.
Yeah. Like I said, I don't have an opinion where it is. I just have an opinion that we should know, know it and anticipate it and be clear.
Yeah. So like I said, the, uh, we told them it's in the right of way only. Peter Baker is accustomed to that on these type of projects, so they're, they're ready to go with that. The good news is we've got some, uh, some room on the sides of the roads, uh, towards the north end of Kruger Road. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, number five on my report. We did get the proposal from Carmichael Construction to replace the facade of the bridge. That was, uh, just under $2,000. The, uh, village manager approved that under his spending authority. Uh, have a schedule for when that work will be done, but it'll follow the same process that the previous repairs did. That, uh, the township will put barricades and the electronic message board sign out at 53. Uh, the bridge will be closed for the duration of repairs, which is probably two days. Moving on, number six, and this one is, uh, kind of a late adding. I, uh, talked to Bill Bolling about this and I know that, uh, this is the first time that the, the village board has heard this. Uh, about two weeks ago, the Village of Kildare notified me that they wanted to do a road program this year. And they wanted to resurface South Kruger Road. Now, the Village of Long Grove proudly owns the east lane of South Kruger Road in front of Beaver Creek Estates. So, uh, if South Kruger Road is repaved from Route 22 down to Cuba, um, there's a lane in there that is the responsibility of Long Grove. To resurface that, that lane for the, the length of the subdivision, uh, our, uh, construction engineering is $75,000 for that. The approach that, uh, that we are taking through the Village of Kildare and talking with Bill Bolling is to, uh, bid this project, uh, and segregate it and put an option to, to do that, that lane and, uh, take the repaving all the way down to South Cuba Road. So, um, when we get the bids back, which would probably be in a couple of months, that's when the, the village would need to make the decision on, maybe we want to, to do this or not. So at this point, we'll, um, Kildare is going to put the bid documents together. They're going to include that lane as an alternate. Uh, and then when the bids come in, then the, the, the village board can, can act on, decide, uh, if they want to surface that section of the road.
Is there some way we could have not been on our heels for this? Or were they just late at coming to the game?
So Kildare, uh, had informed me that they were not going to do a road program this year, uh, due to their finances. But, uh, some, uh, and I'll be honest, the stimulus money is kind of kicking in and that changed their, their thought process, uh, very quickly.
Gotcha. Just trying to find continuous improvement, ask questions. Thank you.
Uh, I'm going to skip down to number 13 on my report, and that's the Route 22 widening project from the state. Uh, the state, if, as reported at the last board meeting, they are looking for direction from the village as far as retaining wall finish. Uh, the state has said that, hey, you know, the village and the options are a form liner that looks like an ashlar brick, which is, uh, kind of similar to the, uh, the bridge abutments. Uh, a little bit different, but that kind of gives you a flavor for that. Or a, uh, kind of an unattractive, uh, rustica. Uh, the village said, hey, how about the downtown retaining wall, you know, putting the veneer? And the state came back and they said, uh, hey, here's the, here's the total cost for doing all of that. And I said, hey, great, that's a, a great cost. Um, is that cost that I-DOT is going to have? Is that cost that is going to be shared with the village? And I have not gotten the, the response from I-DOT on that note. And I think that, uh, having the cost figures is going to go a long ways in having the discussion and ultimately giving them the direction. I, I am, uh, going to have a call with I-DOT, uh, later this week to discuss that. And I'll have that information, I'll, I'll, uh, pass that along to village manager Bolling so that he can, uh, distribute that to the board. So everybody can take a look and, uh, kind of put some thoughts on that.
Yeah, Jeff, I think you mentioned it, but we have the option of two for free. Two, two walls for free. We don't have to, we don't, it's the upgrade that differentials what we're paying for.
So we're going to see the, the samples of, of what, what we're talking?
Yeah, correct. Correct. Yeah, I'm, I'm envisioning, you know, option A, B, and you know, however many there are, uh, what they look like. And also what the cost implication is, you know, not only to the project, but also to Long Grove.
Yeah, one of the freebies is that, the, that abandoned nursery on 83. They'll give us that design. That's the rib design that holds up their parking lot. It's not highly attractive, but it's functional. So that's one of the free ones that we can get.
That's the one that looks like the block?
Uh, well, it's, it's vertical lines, so it's, it's pretty, pretty basic stuff, but it's been there for a number of years, so.
That, and that is the, uh, the rustica.
Rustica.
That I referred to.
Hey Jeff, Jeff, can you get that information or get, uh, Denise or Bill or somebody, Sherry, to post it? Um, so that we can see, the board can see the preliminary plans and even some of that information. Cause we have it, right? There, because they gave it to you, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. So, so I think that'd be a great place. We can put it on, you know, the next board meeting, pack it somewhere or just even have it on a site somewhere so we can look at it, right?
Yeah, I'll, uh, get it over to, uh, Bill and, Bill and Denise and likely, uh, find its way onto the, uh, Google Drive.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next thing, uh, item 14 is the pathway on Robert Parker Coffin Road. Uh, all of the owners have, uh, verbally agreed to the easements on that project. That is very good news. Uh, next step is, uh, getting their signatures on the, on the piece of paper so that they can be recorded. I-DOT had a few, uh, minor comments last month that we responded to typical, uh, I-DOT review time. We haven't heard back from that, but, um, we're getting very, very, very close to, um, getting that thing ready to go out to bid so that we can get that constructed this summer.
Jeff, do you have any answer to my question that I asked you this afternoon about the, the, the work that's going to be done there with the sewer?
Uh, as far as getting that, uh, that coordinated?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, yeah, that dovetails very nicely with the, uh, the email that I sent out to the board prior to the meeting. There's a, there's a lift station, sanitary sewer lift station in Three Lakes. And it discharges through a force main that, uh, goes on Three Lakes down to Robert Parker Coffin Road and over, and then, uh, east into the downtown. So that's, it's going to be sharing some space between, uh, the Robert Parker Coffin pathway and the sanitary sewer both being on the south side of the road. So, uh, that was part of the, the discussion this afternoon with the county. You know, the primary focus of the meeting was alternate routing, which I can get into. But the other thing was kind of, uh, talking and, you know, we don't want to get into the situation where, um, you know, the village is the first one to get in there and then the county, you know, destroys what the village did. So, um, the county is looking to get that force main replaced, uh, pretty much ASAP, if you will, uh, because it's failed multiple times over the last nine months.
Jeff, I'm sharing my screen so you can see. But Bobby brought up a fantastic point, and that is if we're going to be putting a pathway in here, um, if it's either coordinated at the same time, or maybe if the land is being disturbed, you put the force main, and maybe they'll pay for part of it. I don't know.
There was, there was my thinking. And, and, and also why disrupt people twice if we can just do it once?
So I thought it was a great idea and that, thanks Bobby for bringing that up. So I hadn't even read it yet. I just knew that it was being disseminated to the board.
Right. So I, I, there's, there's certainly opportunity here. And now knowing how close the village is with the pathway project and the focus that the county is putting on the sanitary sewer replacement, uh, the time is nigh to have those discussions and, and work out those, those agreements. But, uh, yeah, I, I share the, the thought and the opinion, no, nothing worse than, uh, putting improvements in and having them, you know, taken out, you know, soon thereafter or disturbed. So, um, to have the, uh, the conversation about the sanitary sewer force main, uh, as shown on this exhibit, the sanitary sewer force main is the, the red line. Uh, the Three Lakes Drive Lift Station is called out. And Bill, you're doing a very good, uh, I don't know if this is Vanna White or not, but, uh, tracing it. Uh, it goes from Three Lakes down to Robert Parker Coffin and then, uh, it ends at, uh, an existing manhole that's right in front of the.
Olive tap.
Exactly, exactly. So, and at that point, the sanitary sewer continues on gravity. The, the county's initial focus was, you know, we need to replace this force main and let's replace it where it's at. Uh, but they quickly saw that, uh, it's, that approach would be disruptive to the downtown and would also is, uh, I just mentioned, uh, you know, disrupt or and remove improvements that the village just spent a lot of money on here not too long ago. Uh, the award-winning improvements, if I may. So the county, uh, says, hey, you know, maybe there's another, uh, option here and, uh, a win-win, you know, for the, for the village. The county has proposed two alternate, uh, concepts. They've, uh, proposed the idea of putting the sanitary sewer, uh, along the east side of Archer Parking Lot. So taking it from the lift station down Three Lakes, a portion of Robert Parker Coffin and then turning and going along the east side of the parking lot is, uh, highlighted in yellow there. Uh, and then connecting to a, uh, an existing sanitary sewer manhole, uh, right where the cursor is, the southeast corner of the lot. They also, uh, proposed the idea, hey, you know, instead of that length, maybe there's an opportunity to, uh, connect it to the existing sanitary sewer that's right behind, behind, meaning east of the Archer Outlets. Uh, a shorter distance, uh, but that would involve, uh, remove and replacing a section of pavement to make that connection. That's, uh, what is in green there. And, you know, in talking and kind of kicking around these ideas with, uh, the county and, uh, Bill Bolling this afternoon, the concept on the east side, um, kind of, uh, surfaced as, uh, you know, a preferred route, uh, meaning that, uh, the county offered to install that sanitary sewer trenchless, meaning, uh, directional drill it. So they would be able to install that whole line without impacting the existing vegetation, uh, that's along the east side of the parking lot. Uh, the route in, in green is, you know, shorter, but, you know, it would involve the removing and replacing some of the sanitaries, uh, that some of the pavement that's out there for the Archer Parking Lot. So either, either of those options would minimize and, uh, eliminate the, uh, need to disturb the infrastructure, the road in front of the olive tap and, uh, the, the white building there at the southeast corner of Archer and Old McHenry Road, or Archer and Robert Parker Coffin, excuse me. And, uh, it seems that both options are doable. Um, and it connects to existing sanitary sewer that's, uh, owned and maintained by the Lake County Public Works.
That's what I was.
So, uh, two other, two other comments that I would make. Um, in the, in the past, there has been sanitary sewer back, backup issues, uh, experienced by Joni's Pizzeria. And a lot of that had to do with this force main connecting into that existing manhole in front of the olive tap. So that would take, take that, uh, scenario, uh, out of the equation, if you will. So that would be a win for, you know, those businesses right there. The other, the other thing that we, uh, discovered or the county discovered, we confirmed the sanitary sewer is in the Archer Parking Lot. Um, they're, they're called out, they've got a leader on each side. Those were put in when the parking lot was reconstructed, uh, back in 2009, 2010, uh, for the purpose of servicing those, um, outlets. We found out that the easements were not recorded and the sanitary sewer wasn't officially transferred over to the county. Uh, and at this point, the county is offering to televise those sewers and take ownership of them. Stepping back to the planning of the Archer Parking Lot, just reading through the, the notes and the project files, it was always intended that those sewers would be public sanitary sewers. They were permitted that way. They were installed that way. It just, you know, for some reason, the ball got left at the two yard line. So the county is, uh, is graciously agreed to, uh, pick it, pick up the ball on that one and, and run it into the end zone and make those, uh, bona fide public sewers, which they will need to be when the Archer Outlets are developed. So the county is looking for direction from, from the village, uh, on these alternate, uh, connections. I would, uh, recommend that, uh, serious consideration be given to either, either option. Um, I think it's kind of a, a, a coin flip, you know, on the east versus the west from an engineering standpoint. I do kind of prefer the option to connect, uh, to the manhole right behind the outlets, the one in green. Standpoint, it gets more flow into that sanitary sewer line behind the outlets, which will, uh, help flush that line when everybody gets, uh, connected unintended. Uh, but like I said, it's, uh, it's kind of a coin flip. I think there's, uh, it's a win for the village to avoid the disruption downtown. County wants to construct this project this year, so they want to keep, uh, moving. So, uh, at this afternoon's meeting, they asked for some, uh, some. at this afternoon's meeting, they asked for some, uh, some immediate or, uh, prompt feedback from the village. So that's why I, uh, kind of got the ball rolling in quick order and sent this, uh, off to the trustees before, uh, the board meeting tonight. So that we could have a discussion and get some, uh, some thoughts.
So you're, you're asking the board, um, if it would be this option. Uh, we, we would not go all the way down to the Olive Tap. It would go this way. This would have caused some pavement, um, that has to be replaced and so forth here, but it, it's right on the border. Um, or secondly, um, installing it, um, in the, uh, whatever that is conservancy area here, they might be able to bore it through so it wouldn't disrupt any of the plant material there. Sounds like you're leaning towards this because this would provide us the most benefit long-term. So those are your two options you're looking for us to make a decision on?
Uh, some direction so that the county can continue with their, their plans, correct?
So call the green option A, call the, this one option B.
No, call them the other way because they're labeled that way on the thing.
Oh, where are they labeled?
Top left.
Top left. Oh, there you go. Yep. So call it, um, A, uh, or, or, uh, B. So who's in favor of A?
Question?
Yeah.
Um, just in, in terms of like calendar staging, so if we end up, um, working on Stempel Lot, which by my unofficial reckoning is full every Saturday and Sunday. Um, and when I drove by Archer had a whole lot of traffic in there today as well. Which, how will that work out? If we're paving Stempel and then there's work being done over here in Archer? What's going to be our capacity for parking and can that be coordinated on the calendar? So it's not really an A or B unless A or B have different effects on the amount of parking we can take that care of there.
So, um, the sanitary sewer, you know, I would, uh, suggest that, uh, much like the conversation we had for Kruger, you know, not allow the county, you know, without prior agreement that, to use the Archer for storage. To put the sanitary sewer pipe in, in the ground, um, you know, they're going to need an easement and a working area of about, about 20 feet wide. So if you, if you have the, uh, if you go with the yellow option A, um, there's going to be some disruption at the, the northeast corner of the lot because they're going to have to actually dig that up to truly make a physical connection. And then at the southeast corner, potentially that that, potentially that would have a, uh, an impact on the in-out and the ingress egress of the parking lot. Whereas the other option B, you know, that, that's kind of out of the main circulation of the parking lot. Uh, probably lose a handful of spots from time to time, but, uh, wouldn't have an impact on the, the main ingress egress.
Gotcha. Thank you. That's what I, yeah, it was more on the, I, I would anticipate we're going to have parking that's going to move from Stempel to Archer temporarily. So.
Well, we're running, uh, it's getting late, so, um, I don't know if there's an easy way, effective way to, you know, maybe I'll just go around.
I would make a motion that we accept alternate B.
Um, and I don't know if we have to make a formal motion, but.
Okay, move it along. I want B.
All right, Bobby wants B. Rita, what do you want?
I'm not an engineer. I'm not an engineer and I defer to our village engineer. So if he thinks B is better, I, I, I would, I think that's enough.
B, Rita. You're muted, but, uh, I can't read your lips.
B.
Bingo. All right. Uh, Chuck.
B.
Chris.
No opinion, B.
All right, no opinion B. So you have your direction.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Uh, the last item that I just wanted, uh, briefly, uh, update on item 16, the Lake Eleanor Estates, the drainage. Uh, that lake is, has been talked about numerous times, uh, does not drain very well and drains through a six inch pipe. That, uh, nobody knows the, uh, the condition of, uh, had a conversation with the HOA last Tuesday afternoon. And we get to the point where, uh, you know, the HOA wasn't, they didn't have, uh, records within the last, uh, 13 years of what that pipe was. We certainly don't know what it looks like as it exits the subdivision. It goes through the Poles Nursery Project, property, excuse me. And then it also goes into the, uh, Indian, uh, Indian Lakes or Tahoe Drive in the county. So nobody has any knowledge or records on how that pipe functions. Uh, anecdotally, it doesn't, uh, doesn't function very well. So what I suggested to the board, what, the HOA board was, let's get a proposal. And then to televise and clean that thing so that we can assess what it actually looks like and what repairs are needed. And then we, and once we get the proposal, um, let's, uh, approach the other owners and see if they want to partner in evaluating that pipe. So, um, I'm awaiting that proposal, but, uh, as soon as I have that, uh, I'm going to be talking with, uh, Bill Balling about, uh, contacting pools to see if, what their interest is in, um, contributing to the study of the pipe. And then, uh, we will also, uh, reach out to the township as they own a significant portion of the pipe. That's, uh, along Tahoe Drive. So, so the focus is on that, uh, and, uh, I was happy that, uh, the HOA board, uh, contacted me and set up that, that meeting so we could discuss that and move that one forward. So, uh, with that, um, there's a couple other items in here, but, uh, in the interest of time, I'll just, uh, end there. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
If no questions, Jeff, thank you. And, um, Vic, I'm going to let Jeff go. Is that okay? Yep. All right.
All right, guys. Have a good rest of the meeting.
We're putting pathways up for bid, right? The pathway.
Yeah, that, we're, we're almost there. We'll have that probably, uh, for a formal approval to get that, uh, Robert Parker Coffin pathway out to bid, uh, next month. That, uh, gives us time to get hopefully IDOT's final approval and then also coordinate the timing with the county.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome. So it's, have a good rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Well, it's, uh, it's approaching 10 o'clock and I know we have Sharon Clump that we may lose soon. I, um, I know that we're into the, um, the village president trustee reports. I do know that there's one thing that we have to just touch on. Uh, Vic, I'll take your advice here, but, uh, Bill's listed, uh, appointing Sherry Schlagman as, uh, clerk pro temp. Beginning May 1st, we need to, uh, backfill Amy. Um, do we do that tonight? What do we, uh, or? And you're muted.
Um, that can be the direction of the board. And it doesn't have to be done by formal action. Actually, we could have Amy. Uh, if she's so inclined to simply make that appointment, that's something that, uh, the clerk can appoint deputies. And so we don't have it formally on the agenda for any kind of action, but Amy can do that with the guidance of the board.
Any objections? Amy, would you do that for us?
I will do that.
Any objections? All right. Thank you. I'm going to keep us moving. Um, there's one thing that was brought to my attention. I know Bobby's all aware of it. Um, that the dates for Strawberry Fest are being moved to July 16th, 17th, and 18th. It was not on the agenda. We did approve it for June 25th, 26th, and 27th. I do have executive powers to approve the date change, I believe. So if you are, any objections, um, let me know, but I would just, um, approve the change. And I don't think we have to take it any further or Vic, do I?
If, if I could just explain why they moved it.
Sure.
They're, they're, they're hoping that those extra couple of weeks will give them more freedom of movement.
So Vic, I have the authority to approve that, right? Or because it's not on the agenda or it's just a minor change.
You, you can go ahead and if there's any concern, we could always come back with a ratification, but I, I think that, uh, your advising the board is sufficient at this point.
Yeah, and I have it for, uh, for, for.
It's a COVID action. You, we gave it to you, Bill.
You gave me the power. I just always, as you know, I am not approving anything without running it by you because I don't want to deal with the wrath of all you. So. If I do something wrong, right? So I, I run it by you all. So thank you. Thank you. So I'm, I'm nodding heads. Chris, you're not nodding, but I, um, you're dark, but, uh, if you don't say no, I'm going to.
No, that's fine, Bill. Go for it.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you. Um, I, I, I don't even have time to talk about it. I don't know. Um, we'd probably have maybe do a few email. I, there's a fundraiser for the historic society about, um, a dog mayor fundraiser. Does anyone have any objections to that?
It's really a cute idea.
So I'm going to support it unless somebody has objections if you, if you read that. So. All right. I'm taking that as a yes. Um, and then the only last thing that we need to figure out is the next meeting will be the swearing in. Um, Vic, um, it can be done virtually. Uh, I just, you know, in talking with Bill Balling, did we want to do? It doesn't have to be done at a board meeting. Do we want to do something, um, outside of a board meeting where, um, it's not in front of the village hall or something like that? So.
Well, I won't be here at the next meeting.
You won't be? Okay. All right. So we.
I may be able to attend electronically. I'll submit a request if I do.
Okay. So electronically for you?
Uh, one thing, Bill, that I failed to mention in my email sheet today. In the, I, I mentioned it in connection, uh, with the footnote, but, um, in the event someone doesn't, uh, attend or isn't, uh, uh, isn't able to be sworn in prior to the meeting. They continue in office until they are. Uh, so, uh, that's just how the statute works, that until the successor and they are their own successors, uh, are appointed. So.
So they can't participate in a meeting.
No, they can't. They can't because they are still now a holdover member, but their successor hasn't been formally appointed. That is, they haven't taken their oath again.
So they can still vote everything else like, okay.
Well, that also means that Amy's hostage until we have an app, a successor for her, right?
Well, we can't hold her hostage. Uh, but that was part of the reason why we were talking about Cherry serving as the, uh, the interim, uh, deputy clerk.
Or as a deputy. Great.
All right. Well, um, I, I'll stop there for my report and keep us moving, right? Because we're really out of time. Um, any other trustee reports? Uh, Chuck, I don't know if we have time to go over the building report tonight.
You know, I was going to really mention outside of what I sent you, which I can send to the rest of the board, or maybe you can put it up on the Google Drive. Uh, Mundaline has begun to do their, uh, property maintenance inspections. I think they got seven of them in, in March. That's a welcome, uh, thing because I've been getting a lot of complaints from people about other properties. So it's great that Mundaline is stepping up. Uh, and we had a, and this is probably a month over month thing. We had yet another work without permit violation. And I brought it up before. We don't have to talk about it tonight really, but I would like the board to think about, does it make sense to impose fines for that type of behavior? And that's all I'll say about it in the report.
Thanks, Chuck. Any other trustee reports?
Yeah, Bill, I've got, I've got one.
Yeah, you know, I, and your email came through. I got the note that it didn't come to me, but it, um, must be important.
Well, it's not overly important, actually. Um, Swalco wants to amend the intergovernment agreement between us and Swalco. And since we have to formally vote on moving it forward, I just wanted to get everybody's perspective on it. It's such a minor change. Basically what they're doing is want to add a provision that a former mayor of a, of a town can also be appointed as the official representative of that town, even though they're no longer the mayor. And this is just a rewrite. It's a one, one phrase add-in for a mayor who was on Swalco, didn't win his reelection bid. Municipalities still wanted him to be involved. So it's, it's simple as that, but I just needed to sort of get everybody's buy-in on that. Uh, so that I can vote to move it forward. It, it's really that simple. No other change but that. It's like so basic. So if we could just kind of pull the crowd and see if anybody objects to that preliminarily, if not, I'll go ahead and vote, vote it, vote for it at the next meeting.
Any objections? All right. Silence means there's no objections.
Just a couple, couple more comments. Thank you for that. A couple more comments. Um, uh, electronics recycling countywide was down eight percent uh, for the year, the year of 2020. Recycling overall was up eight percent. Residential trash was up eight percent as well. Um, just very, very briefly, uh, many municipalities, some municipalities who are signing new contracts with their waste haulers are also implementing a third cart. And that third cart is for food waste scraps and things that could be compostable. So, uh, some municipalities are now looking at a third cart instead of just a two. And lastly, just kind of a random thought, um, how about a go green committee for Long Grove and a report?
It's a great idea, Chris.
Are you volunteering?
We could do a better job recycling.
Well, it's not just that. It's, um, it's the festivals and, um, you know, zero waste or zero landfill for the festivals and things like that as well. So I think there's a lot to it. I think there's a lot that could be done. And I think it's something we should maybe take a look at or think about. Thank you very much.
Great idea. Thanks.
I think it's a great idea too, Chris, and you've always been an advocate for those ideas anyway. I think it's great.
Well, thanks, guys. That's it, Bill. Move on.
Any other trustee reports? Otherwise, um, I'll move to, I don't think there's a village planners report. At least we don't have time for it, Jim, unless you want to give us a report. I, uh, but I'm going to move us right along. Okay, good. Thank you. Um, approval of the minutes from the April 13th, 2021, uh, meeting.
So move.
Moved by trustee O'Reilly.
I, I had one minor change that I had sent to Amy regarding, uh, the public hearing, just to note that there were no public comments. So if that motion can be as. Thank you.
Okay. So trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Well, and I need a second.
Yeah, who's the second? Right. Cause we, it was moved by, uh, trustee O'Reilly, seconded by.
Second.
Uh, trustee Nora.
I'm sorry. I had one, I had one tweak.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, it was on the community grant. Um, you wrote that it would start at noon. I don't think that was decided. So it was just maybe change it to, uh, a noon start was discussed. But I don't think that's cast in stone.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, not ready to vote.
All right. Um, let's do, uh, trustee O'Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Nora.
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Aye.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Aye.
And trustee Barassi.
Aye.
All right. Motion carried. Um, we do need to, uh, ask if there's, uh, anyone that wants to make public comment. Anyone want to make public comment? Roger, I apologize. We didn't have a chance to have you give us an update for the EDC. We are running late. Can we get that next week? Or next time? Or are you still there? All right. Um, I'm.
Thank you.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Thanks for sticking it out, by the way.
Well, I've learned about Coffin Road, so that's good for me.
Got it. Um, so then, um, uh, basically, uh, there, there's no public comment, so I'm going to, uh, look for a motion to go into executive session for personal matters only. Um, Vic, you do not have to stay for that. So.
Thank you.
So thank you for being here tonight.
Good night, everybody.
Uh, moved by, uh, trustee O'Reilly, seconded by.
Second.
By trustee Nora. That's a roll call.
Uh, trustee Barassi.
Yes.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Yeah.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Yes.
Trustee Nora.
Aye.
And trustee O'Connor.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried. Um, I need to make sure, uh, not, none of us, um, because I'm going to remove people here because there's somebody that has iPad.
I have the feeling that was Scott's iPad.
That's what I think as well.
All right.
I don't think it disconnected.
Okay. And then there's somebody else. Call in user one.
Yeah.
I'm going to remove that person too, so we can go into executive session. Cause they're not there. Are you there? Caller, call in user one? All right. Let me just. Okay. Uh, let me open up, uh, the breakout room here. Um, you can join if you haven't already. Um, just click the join button. Just click the join button.
Sharon, thank you very much for sticking around with us. I appreciate it. Good night, and same thing with Bill. So, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by trustee O'Reilly, seconded by trustee Kritzmeyer. Amy, you're there, right?
I am. Okay, so O'Reilly on the first and Kritzmeyer on the second. Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Nora.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeyer.
Hi.
And trustee Borowski.
Hi.
All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you.